I was asleep by 8:30.
All right, let's get this meeting started, please. It's 5 o'clock. A call to order. This is a special study session. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco, Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Fugazi,
Here.
Councilmember Hilton,
Here.
Councilmember Marx,
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez,
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here. Thank you very much. So we will get right into it. This is a special study, CMAP study session, and I'll lay out the expectations today. We have one hour because we do have a city council meeting right after this. So we're going to go right to staff presentations, and then right after that, we have presentations by CMAP that you guys can have the center mic here, please. And then city council will have some questions. If there are, if there is time for regular public comment, we'll go to that. And then I would like to leave 15 minutes or so at the end of the meeting for council direction. So with that being said, take it away, staff.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're going to review our community media access partnership. We're going to start with a little bit of background, a little bit about the contract with CMAP, and then we're going to talk about the funding. So to start with the background, Charter Communications and AT&amp;T granted a state franchise to provide cable video services in Gilroy, Hollister, and San Juan Bautista per the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006, or DIVCA. Prior to that time, there were other franchise laws and agreements in place. DIVCA kind of took this to another level. DIVCA provides channel capacity for public educational and government access, or PEG, and authorizes cities to receive payments from state franchisees for PEG access purposes. These are called PEG fees. In 2001, Gilroy, Hollister, and San Juan Bautista formed CMAP, or Community Media Access Partnership, as an organization to develop, manage, and administer the PEG access channels in a community media center. Under this agreement, PEG fees, 100% of those which came from charter to the city have been remitted to CMAP, and 20% to 22% of cable franchise fees which were provided to the city from charter were remitted to CMAP. The difference in the 20% to 22% depends on the contract because we've had various contracts since 2001. And then in this most recent contract, it started at 20% and then moved to 22% after that first year of the contract. In 2020, the current five-year agreement was negotiated, and on January 1st, 2021, that contract was entered into. It was entered into by CMAP and the three cities, and this contract expires on December 31st, 2025. In January 2025, the city, in preparation for a potential renewal, commenced contractual performance review of the agreement and the services, and submitted several information requests to CMAP. Among these requests, we were asking for annual reports, year-end financial statements, an account statement showing the fund balance for the special banking subaccount for the purchase of city council chambers broadcasting equipment, the 10-year plan for council chambers broadcasting equipment replacement, and an independent financial audit. All of these items are required by the contract. In April of 2025, the city issued a letter of noncompliance to CMAP per the agreement, and with this letter of noncompliance, it commenced the 100 days to cure the breaches as required by the contract. So that 120-day cure period was set to expire on August 28th, 2025. I believe we did extend it by about 30 days after discussing with CMAP some of the challenges that they were facing in providing this material to us. In November 2025, so our current where we are right now, certain of these items have been cured. They've been able to provide us some of the reports, but other key provisions have not been cured, notably the 2023 and 2024 financial statements and the independent audit. We believe that there are likely other noncompliance items that are still out there. Ones that we're kind of looking at are the insurance requirements. Also, there's a requirement for an independent performance review, which was supposed to be completed after the fourth year of the contract. So under this contract, CMAP has certain obligations. One is to operate the PEG channels, so that public access channel, the education channel, the government channel. These are the channels on cable TV, which are channels 17, 18, and 19. In addition, they're required with operating a community media center. They're required to have policies and procedures for use and operation of the PEG equipment, facilities, and channels. They're in charge of the playback and the cable cast for these channels, so programming the channels, making sure that there's shows running on the channels. And they're in charge for maintenance of the equipment. So in the media center, they have a wide range of equipment in there that they're in charge of maintaining. There's also equipment here at City Hall that connects their feed to the cable feed, so they're in charge of maintaining that. And then under this agreement, whatever equipment that they replace in our council chambers with that fund that they set aside, they would be in charge of maintaining that equipment as well. They are required under this agreement to provide staffing for video production services for council and planning commission meetings. This piece we halted because we had an ongoing issue with reliability and with their staff being trained to run our equipment. We had multiple times where new people were just thrown in here without having seen our equipment before, knowing how to run our equipment. And then ultimately, we had an issue where their staff left the audio on during a closed session, and we didn't find out about it until we received a call from a community member letting us know that the audio was able to be heard. So at that time, we stopped using CMAP staff for the video production services, and we're currently outsourcing that to a third-party vendor. This vendor has been extremely reliable. It's now all completed remotely, so they have a variety of staff that can perform this recording of our meetings for us, and we've never had an issue with them leaving the cameras on, leaving the audio on. They've done a good job for us. In addition to these obligations, there is a reporting requirement, some of which we've touched on already, but just to go through them really quickly. The annual plan and budget, annual reports regarding statistics on programming, year-end financial statements by an independent CPA, an audit every three years by an independent CPA. And just to point out, that audit's really important because that's one of the mechanisms that we have to ensure that the way they're using the funding is in compliance with the legal requirements for how those funds are required to be used. They're required to have an independent performance review after the fourth year of the contract. There are certain insurances they're required to have. And then there is a provision in the contract that upon city requests, they'll provide a certain number hours of video production services if the city desires. To date, we haven't used that provision because we've been focused on trying to get these reports and the requirements of the contract in place before we ask them to provide other services that are a nice benefit but not required by the contract. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Harjo, who's going to go over some of the funding and the numbers.
Thank you. Harjo Tsang is the Finance Director with the City of Gilroy. I'll cover the next few slides to the end. So with respect to funding, what's been provided to CMAP under the current agreement? So on average, Gilroy has contributed about $252,000 to CMAP, or approximately about $1 million over the four years. That consists of two categories of payments. One is the franchise fees, so about $65,000 on average, and then the PEG fees that are collected by the operators, roughly about $187,000 on that. We did pause the funding earlier this year due to noncompliance. And with respect to other agencies, you know, how much are they contributing? They're contributing about $224,000 a year. And on this slide, I've delineated staff's estimates based on the financial statements that were provided for 2021 and 2022. So again, on average, $170,000 a year in PEG fees is coming from the other agencies. What are the qualified uses of those funds? Again, the PEG fees are required to be spent on capital expenditures to maintain facilities and equipment for the PEG access. And then with respect to the franchise fees, they're general fund use, so no certain requirements are tied to those. Our concern primarily is in the PEG funding. How is that currently being spent, and are we compliant, or is there exposure for the city on that front? Again, the key provisions that we outlined, where we are currently, is we have two that are in compliance, which is the proof of the 10% set aside and a separate subaccount. CMAP has also, since the information request, developed a equipment replacement plan. There are two items that are noncompliant, which are the annual reports regarding the activities during the preceding fiscal year, as well as the financial statements and the independent fiscal audit. They are currently in process. They have completed the financial statements for 2021 and 2022 as of last Friday, and I believe there is a plan to complete the subsequent years by December. Again, we believe there may be other areas of noncompliance, particularly insurance, the fourth-year performance review that's required. I believe this was, these were additional stipulations that the council at that time had built into the agreement, given the concerns. They wanted an opportunity in the fourth year, after the fourth year, to review the performance of the agreement. And then also, in July of 2025, CMAP updated their bylaws to effectively remove the city's voting rights on the board. We still have a position on the board, but no voting rights. So staff have expressed concerns on that front as well. So with respect to next steps, we're really here before you to get council direction on where we're headed in the future. So the first option is, again, knowing that there are challenges with the current agreement in itself, with compliance-related issues. One option is, you know, you could direct us to renew the CMAP agreement, but our recommendation would be under a restructure scope and funding, and it'd be going on a going-forward basis. The other option is to transition to internal management, where we would administer the fees to ensure they are spent in compliance with the laws, and then we would take on developing a program in-house. And we did survey about seven cities. Five of them are managing them, majority of them are managing them internally or through some sort of a similar arrangement, a separate organization, where they petitioned the cities to provide funding. Well, the third is a hybrid option, where we would conduct a RFP for specific services that this council desires to offer, and then we would obviously solicit those proposals from other organizations. And of course, CMAP would be an organization that would likely be invited to participate in the RFP process as well, if they wish to do so. Alternative uses of fundings, again, PEG fees really are required to be spent on broadcasting equipment, upgrades, and maintain those facilities. Recently, the state has enacted Senate Bill 707, which outlines changes to the Brown Act and does require the city to make an investment to the technologies that are offered here in the council chamber. So we believe there is a nexus. We already have a requirement that we would need to fulfill and can utilize those fees for. With respect to franchise fees, again, if we were to bring this in-house, we would either through our recreation division or a third-party, develop a program to offer, you know, media literacy classes or similar scope of services, and then formulate an agreement for services based on that, which would be more so organizations are paid or vendors are paid after the services are rendered. So it'd be on an actual expenditure basis. So those are the alternative uses of the funds. That concludes the staff's presentation, and I'm happy to take questions now, or I'll turn this back over to the mayor.
Yeah, we are going to go right to presentation by CMAP, and then we'll, we will have questions for staff right after this as well. Thank you. Take it away, Mike.
Good evening, city council, staff, everybody here. Thank you for being here. Where to begin? I became the Executive Director of CMAP on February 4th, 2024. I came in with the understanding that things needed to be improved upon, reorganized. I knew that we were 20 months or so away from renegotiating contracts, or contract expiration, I'll say, and I knew there was a lot of work to do. My sales pitch to the hiring committee was, "This place is a mess. I'm here to fix it up." They believed me. On February 5th, 2024, I walked into the upstairs office and just facilities, basically, and then I realized, "Oh my God, I had no idea." Now, nobody here, actually except for your city representative, who's been on our board, has been there from 2021 to 2024. Nobody. Everybody's new. What we've been able to do was put our head down, create a community media center, which is the first and only in the region that accepts everyone in the community, allows everybody to express their individual artistic ability, their creativeness. It's welcoming. It's friendly and open. It's collaborative. And in addition to that, we went to work on getting these compliance issues handled. What we learned was, because when the last group of leadership left, the only semblance of leadership was a few board members who had been there for the time. And let me stand corrected. So Rochelle is recently, at eight years of a six-year term, has removed herself from the board. But in February of 2024, we had roughly five people held over that were board members. What became really clear was, I came in as a change agent. I came in to improve things. I came in to really make CMAP what I remember it being in 2001 through about 2006, when I had familiarity and partnered with them on different things. They were incredible and amazing and a great resource. I wanted to bring that back. Change agents, if you are one, realize that you get a lot of turbulence in the air when you try to relaunch. To sum up the past 20 months, we faced every kind of obstacle. We faced, my phone call. We faced gravity. We faced board members who've met with lawyers to talk about my termination, even though they never approached me to have a conversation or talk about performance or anything like that. Change is scary. With that, I was able to piece together a very incredible team, working with Gavin College, who is our strategic partner, to put together a group that can service the community, to help the city council and the City of Gilroy fulfill your charter to enhance the lives of your residents. I'm a big city council. I'm a big City of Gilroy supporter. I always have been. And what I can, what I can share with you is that my experience trying to revive CMAP, I've met with some city council members and/or city staff people who are very supportive, very collaborative, and I've met and had to kind of run up against others who aren't. It's an adult world out there. I'm an adult. I am happy that I'm standing here, able to present to you. But without that little bit of history, I don't know that you could appreciate where we are today, and that's the point of this. Where we are today is providing government meeting recordings and playback for all the municipalities in our contract except for Gilroy. When it was brought up to me in 2024, about October, that we were not streaming or taking care of meetings in Gilroy, I think within a day or two, I had our then operations manager reach out to our city representative, and we have been looking for solutions ever since. "We don't want to replace what you currently have," to quote one of you up there, "It was broken. It's fixed. Don't mess with it." I kind of agree with that. But what I have a problem with is, your contractor provided us with the exact, the exact connection in the exact slot so that we can also stream and fulfill our contractual obligations. I don't know what happened, and I could imagine how bad service was in 2022, 2023, when this all went down. But what I can share is that I provided that information in, I believe it was March of this year, May, let me correct that. We have yet to be able to connect our equipment, technically your equipment that we steward, to be able to fulfill our contractual obligation. So there's, you guys probably know, when you're trying to rebuild something and there's a little bit of lack of organization or maybe some relationships that aren't as good as you'd like them to be, you go into repair mode. That's what we've been doing. We've been trying really hard to get our connection back so that we can represent the city the way that we are contractually obligated to. I will add that we do have insurance, and I'm happy to provide anything that you want as far as policies and proof. And it's pretty much it. I'm here to answer your questions, to find a path forward. I believe CMAP has come back in 20 months to be the cutting-edge community media center that we are. We provide excellent, proven service. We troubleshoot equipment that goes down. We solve problems. We are responsive. We are professional, and I think it deserves a deeper look than what staff is proposing. And I'm, again, happy to answer any questions at the proper time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go back more, why don't you come back up, Harjo? I'm assuming that there might be some questions from staff, excuse me, the council. So any questions? I don't see any questions. Kelly, Councilmember Ramirez, why don't you go first?
I do. Finally.
So thank you both for your presentations. I have a whole bunch of questions. I don't know who to direct them at. Do I just throw them out there and have either you or Mr. Sanchez
Sure.
answer them?
Either way, yeah.
Some, I think, are more directed for you. Some are more for staff.
Sure.
One of the questions I have is, why is our city representative no longer a voting member on the board?
I think I'd...
Yeah, please.
You should stay up here, Mike, if you'd like. That's how we get through this phase.
Thank you.
The question is, why does your city representative no longer have the ability to vote? Bylaws have been actually attempted to be revised since at least 2020. Former leadership has never been able to do it. We got there, were able to bring on some board members who are very active, very proactive, very professional, and we started working on the bylaws, and we got them revised. The reason behind not just your city representative, but all municipal representatives being treated as strategic partners and advisors to our board as opposed to voting members, came down to a couple of issues that we debated. One was conflict of interest, especially in regards to the City of Gilroy. And the logic behind that was, the department that the city representative represents basically benefits from any funds not paid to CMAP. That right there would be something of concern. We didn't have any other municipal representatives because the former board either never saw fit or never assigned somebody to go after the municipalities and say, "Hey, you have a seat? Come and represent." So the only, uh-oh. You'll get a chance. That's my bouncer. Sorry. Yeah, he'll get a chance. So the City of Gilroy was the only one that had a representative. From personal experience, being the Executive Director, I was routinely called out in meetings, off agenda, with leading, "There's an accusation that," for example, "There's an accusation that you fired somebody right before Christmas." Did you want me to answer that? "There's an accusation that you spent $54 on gas. It's a personal use." There's an, so on and so on. Another example is the fact that if a board member on CMAP's board doesn't put the future and growth and success of CMAP first, they probably don't belong, at least with a voting position on the board. Now, we take our advisors and our strategic partners very seriously. We're building alliances with a lot of different agencies. We want everybody at the table. But in order for us to make the changes as fast as we have and to keep growing in the direction we are, we have to bring in the vote to people who have CMAP's growth and prosperity and success to benefit the community first.
Thank you. So before I go to Councilmember Fugazi, Councilmember Ramirez, you said you had a few questions. Do you want to keep going?
Yes, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Harjo, would you be able, like, the other cities that have contracts like this, do you know whether or not they have representatives that are voting members of the board?
It's not uncommon for a city to be providing funding and also have a voting seat on the board of a third-party organization, as is the case with, you know, here within Gilroy, we have Visit Gilroy. Obviously, we have a council member that's a representative. We provide funding to Visit Gilroy or other partner organizations.
But there are, and the funding that you provide is absolutely earmarked. It's not... Okay, that's my understanding. Okay. Does the board adopt a budget spend plan to demonstrate fiscal stewardship?
Yes, in a perfect world, absolutely. What we have been doing with the year-end reviews that we've been completing to submit to the city and our audit that's in process is we've been restructuring our accounting and accountability when it comes to finance because, again, getting in when I did, seeing where things were, I'm not going to ascribe any malfeasance or anything to anybody. I can just say that our finances were not as clean and clear as we should be to operate from a fiscal stewardship situation. So one of the things that I will commit to and promise, and we are working on this, I promise you, is we will have a budget for 2025, 2026 before the, probably, I think I have the 20th of December as our target date. Part of that reason is because as we're going through these year-end reviews and audit, it's helping us to look at the books and make sure that we're aligned. And then also, we're trying to align ourselves budget-wise to go after grants. There's easy couple hundred thousand, quarter million dollars of grants a year available to us because of what we do. We want to go after that money and be considered as an investment from the city that is finding their own funding from different sources and by their being good stewards.
Okay, so some of the agreement has a couple of requirements. Section 1D, policies and procedures. CMAP shall develop policies and procedures for the use and operation of PEG access equipment and shall file these policies and procedures with the cities. Have you done that?
We have not. We are working on that, but... But as of right now, I will say that we have not completed it.
Section 1J, Performance Review, that has still not been done, is that correct?
We have contracted with a person to do the review back in August. The week that she was going to start, her father passed away. It's kind of been the story of how things are going over here. So we just reached out and found another person qualified, Suzanne St. John. I don't know if you guys remember her name. She was the actual founding CEO, executive director of CMAP in 2001. She now has her own consulting agency. We're meeting with her on Wednesday to get the performance review completed.
Okay, and you're working on the insurance, you said?
No, we have insurance. I just need to work on getting you proof.
Okay, so you just haven't submitted it?
Councilmember Ramirez, after the next question, I'd like to move around the council.
Okay, let me ask one more. Do you have data that quantifies the benefit to the Gilroy community? For example, how many Gilroy youth have you had in your programs or taken classes, things like that?
We do, and in our annual report that you have, and I'll qualify the annual report, there's no financial data in it because, again, we're waiting for the audits and year-end reviews so that we can establish our 2025 budget. It will be revised, and with all the other years that are due, you will get all these, but we're waiting on the final audits and year-end reviews. But in here, there is data, and I will tell you, the work that we've done has really been laying the groundwork. Now, we've had thousands of people come through in open houses and different tours and different events that we've had. We've had hundreds of people come in and do different types of training. We have a full podcast room that we actually are securing contracts to do podcasts for community individuals and/or businesses. But we're just getting started. As far as, all the work that we've been doing has been to the undercarriage, to the foundation. Now, we are ready to launch our marketing. We have our online memberships that are going online. We have our class schedule for the spring. So, the data isn't impressive now, but that's because we had to get to this point to be ready to take on, you know, youth and community members. I will say that we have been in communication with both the Holster Unified School District, San Benito Unified School District. They've had tours from their high school group. We've been in a couple of meetings with Gilroy Unified and YMCA, and we're looking at potentially doing some power school activities. There's a lot... This sounds like a snow job, but there's a lot coming. That's all I can say, and that's all I've been saying, is there's a lot coming, but there's been a lot of work that we've had to do to get here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugati?
Yeah, first question, Harjo. The funding that comes in, if we were to take this internal, there are certain things that we can spend that on, and they might be in different places. How do you guys see that going forward? Is there, in terms of providing the services that need to be there for us here as well as the community engagement or community services that have to also be provided?
So, I'll take it in two parts. One, I think you're doing is, if the city were to retain the fundings internally for PEG fees component, we have qualifying expenditures, primarily the audio/video in the chambers as well as the broadcasting equipment that's stored in there periodically every few years requires to be updated. So, the expenditure plan for PEG fees can be set aside, built up, and then be spent on these projects. With respect to the franchise fees that we're currently providing, about 60, some odd thousands, staff would then come back, if that's the direction council gives us, to formulate a program essentially internally, either within the Recreation Division or via a third-party to contract for those services. And so that way, whether it's media literacy classes, anything else related to the youth program that allows them to go ahead and develop content, things of that nature, we would develop that program.
So, those PEG fees, in addition to providing the equipment here, could provide equipment for those particular classes as well?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
So if we, yeah, if this...
And you said it was, I don't know, $170,000, something?
$180,000, yeah.
$180,000 a year, right? That's quite a bit of equipment since we already have an investment in the equipment in terms of just updating, right?
Correct. Yeah, so, you know, I would probably say when in 2022, the last time the city did the major upgrade, I think we spent close to $300,000 in that year. So, things are getting expensive, so while it is a sizable chunk, but if and when we were to do these modernization projects, you know, a large chunk of those fees would be consumed. And then anything that's left, either, you know, we would buy equipment for those classes and things of that nature.
So, but the services that we pay to basically manage the cameras during the meetings and whatnot, that can't come out of any of those funds, right?
We're already budgeting and paying for those, so we're not counting that as coming out of these fundings.
It can't, you said?
It can.
It can?
It can.
What does that amount to every year?
Gosh, I want to say it's roughly about $30,000 to $40,000 in subscription.
Okay, because that's obviously what they're promoting, that they would be doing those services as well, ostensibly for the same money, right? So, the next question I have is actually from Sanchez. It's 20 months since you've been there. I didn't see in here necessarily a layout plan of what's going to be different now than before. In other words, if you were not there before and things were done poorly, and you can find out probably from city staff or what have you, have you laid out a plan and given it to the city to say, "This is how we're going to do it differently. It's going to be exactly like this. This is how we're not going to make this mistake. This is what we're going to do."
In regards to the annual report, there's a section in there that talks about the next 10 years. Pardon me, I don't go for five years, I'm trying to go for 10. Like a strategic, bare-bones plan, we haven't got that far. We've been dealing with getting into compliance. Now, I am happy, not only to have our team present that plan, which we can do, I'd be even happier if the city wanted to be involved in that, that we can partner and collaborate to create something that not just the city wants, but the community wants. We could be that bridge between the two.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that got me out of what you mentioned here, and I just kind of pulled out of it, that set off my little spidey senses, is that you started there in February, and in October, you realized that the FEED wasn't happening. It took eight months for us to understand that the FEED wasn't, that's real concerning.
Yeah, I'll tell you why, or I'll give you my perspective.
Let me interrupt really quick. We are 20 minutes away from, 22 minutes away from 6 o'clock. I don't want you to stop.
I don't need a long follow-up on that either.
Okay. Quick answer?
Very quickly, quickly, one more. I was going to lay it out. We have one more question from council, and then I'm going to go to real quick public comment because we need 15 minutes to do council direction, so go ahead, Mike.
Quick answer. Our operations manager that was there when I was hired had full knowledge. Our board had full knowledge. There was no information dump. As you're there, you're new, you're like, "What do I need to know? What do we got going on?" And I'm putting out fires everywhere. It wasn't until our board president at the time, Paul De Silva, was leaving. He did an exit interview with me, and that's when I learned. Now, it's not that I... Had I known earlier, I think within two or three days, I emailed the City of Gilroy trying to get a resolution. And it's all in the packet that you guys have, so, yeah.
One more question with Councilmember Ramirez.
Just a quick question. Harjo, would we be able to use the PEG funding for updating our translation services at council chambers?
There could be a nexus to utilize some of that, as long as it's for actual capital equipment that translates, but not for operations.
Right, okay, thank you.
May I?
Yeah, so we don't have any public comments, so feel free to take a couple more minutes.
You may have one. Do you have to sign a card?
So far, we have no public comments. So, if there's going to be any public comment...
Sign a card.
Folks better come on up. And it looks like our public comment will be limited to one minute each, please.
Okay. If I could add to that, we have that capability as well. We have the same technology and the same equipment, the same support staff and support partners to be able to do that. Now, given the state of things, I'm not trying to replace your current vendor. The biggest goal for me is to plug in our equipment so we could also stream the meetings. What we do now, because we're trying our best to be in compliance, is we go to your website, we pull the meetings down, and then we put them on our YouTube channel. When we started doing that, we found that there was about a seven-minute dead time because no one would turn off the recording. We brought that to the attention of the city, and then in our next meeting, they said, "There's no problem there, we fixed it." So, we're trying to be good stewards and good partners, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Very much. Thank you, staff. So now we will go to public comment. Looks like we have four or five, and I am going to ask to limit your public comments to one minute, please, so that we can get back to council direction.
If Elliot could come up, then Kevin, followed by Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I would like for you all to consider the option to continue the contract with CMAP. The most important thing to me is economic development. Right now, you have an outside source that you're vending with. They don't live in this community, they don't sleep in this community, they're not spending money in this community. CMAP is in this community. CMAP is also in the community that I live in, which is in San Benito County. And I advocate for transparency. I'm a big Brown Act advocate that nothing should be done behind closed doors. Everything is out front. So that is why I'm asking you, as an independent person of this community and that uses this, this CMAP, is that when you're not... Where's my timer?
You have seven seconds. Thank you, Elliot.
Hi, my name is Kevin Pfeffer, and I just wanted to say that in the short time that I've been around Mike at CMAP, I've seen amazing things happen. They've had classes servicing kids with autism, special needs, open houses for artists of all over the community to come in. They've covered a whole bunch of the downtown events that we've had. With the open houses, you see so many people coming in and just showcasing different kinds of culture, art. Like, as she said just before me, sourcing it from outside of our community, I think you wouldn't have the same vision. I don't think you would have the same, just the community being involved. And I think that's really important. I've seen everything from, you know, the art classes to music, to us kids coming to learn how to do film, audio. There's just so much happening in a very short time, and then, like Mike was saying, they're just getting started. Had to put out a lot of fires first, and I think that vision moving forward knows a lot of potential. Thank you.
This is really deja vu. When Gabe Gonzalez was city manager, he tried to do the same thing. This is not the first time around. And after that, I was at that meeting with Becker Reed was there and got blindsided by that city manager saying, "We need those funds to improve, you know, our equipment." So I met with Jay Boxa about this, because Jay negotiated this agreement with the franchise agreement with the cable company. And he said, "But you can't do that. You can't do that." And there's two other cities that are tied to this agreement. And the thing that what got left out, what Gabe never told the city council, is that the city received, like, a quarter million dollars a year fees from the same cable company. So the question was, "Well, what did you do with the $250,000 a year," or whatever that number was, "all the years that you had it?" It didn't go to equipment, but you wanted to close down CMAP, which is your public access. That's what public access means, not city access, but public access. So I think you need to go back to why this agreement was put in place and where the funds went, you know, why you need it now, when it's not like you're not getting any money. This money comes from the franchise, not the city.
Thank you.
Kelly, followed by Mike, and then Jeff.
Good evening, council. My name is Kelly Pfeffer. I am the co-founder of EROCK School, a mother of seven and someone who was once a young, single mom experiencing homelessness with two small children. I have lived on both sides of this community, the side that struggles and the side that builds opportunities for others. CMAP is contracted with the city to film and distribute city council meetings, but in 2022, the city made the decision to take this opportunity and these jobs away from our local youth and instead send that work and our tax dollars out of state. What could have been on-the-job training for our young people became remote video services purchased from another state, removing both skill-building and economic investment from our own community. But CMAP is so much more than media service. CMAP is a space of true inclusivity, a space where youth and adults from every economic background, every ability level, and every culture can come together and learn. It is a place where local college students of color can curate their own art show, an art show that uplifts diversity and carries a message of belonging. It's a place where teens and kids with autism can take classes, feel welcome in our downtown, and gain confidence in front of and behind the camera.
Thank you. You still have one more, correct?
I have.
A few more?
Three more.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, it's Megan. I wanted to add this to the end of my presentation. In addition to the options that staff has provided council, I have some alternatives. Again, we welcome the transparency, the accountability. So we want to partner with the city, whether that's an elected official that acts as a liaison and an oversight accountability partner. We want to consider an extension of a year to two with quarterly accountability check-ins and oversight. And at the very minimum, give us another six months. Let us finish what we're doing so we can prove to you guys that we belong and we are good stewards of city funding, and we could take that and use it as seed money to grow. Silicon Valley Arts, Silicon Valley Foundation, they're all wanting to partner with us. We have the districts.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
I have Jeff, and then Alex.
Yeah, city council, my name is Jeff Perkins. I am the current board, I guess, treasurer. I came on board in July of this year, and I certainly share some of the concerns about the financials when I first came in and looked at it, but I would say this. The CMAP has been filing a tax return every year, and so there is access to '21, '22, '23, '24. And the first thing I did is I laid them out. And now that we've been spending this time having the numbers reviewed and soon to be an audit, the first two years are almost identical to what the tax return is. So we also have bank statements to show where we stand with the funds. So, I feel confident that, once everything is said and done, we will find that there was nothing that was done inappropriately and that we're on good financial footing, provided the people that owe us would pay us. And so, I look forward to work with CMAP to get back where they need to be.
My name is Alex Larson. I'm currently the vice chairman of the Board of Directors. The biggest problem that I've seen is communication between the City of Gilroy. None of the other cities, none of the other counties, we've had problems with. The communication between the City of Gilroy and CMAP has been absolutely terrible, which is awful because we've had a person on there that should have been communicating back and forth to us. This is the first time that I've heard of the closed session that was inappropriately broadcast. We have never received, that I know of, that we've seen anything coming from the city saying that we've had any of these problems. We've been locked out of the room there to be able to complete our mission, and I thank you all for considering this, and I hope that you go on the right side of the citizens of Gilroy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have a time for all council to have some comments. I do see speakers still up. Or is this from Councilmember Fugati? Is this from before still? Okay. Did you ring in again to speak? Because your name's still up. Okay, so we're now at that time, having our discussion. So I'm looking for council, I mean, staff, up on the board there, you see that what the consideration is, they're asking, staff is asking for us, is for consideration of these future uses. And these are some of the things that Harjo pointed out.
the staff standpoint is, we do have a responsibility to administer a contract, and there were provisions that were laid out for some time. Unfortunately, many months have gone by as staff has tried to get the information necessary to comply with the contract. I appreciate what was said tonight. I understand myself, starting with a difficult organization and having to rebuild it, I've been there. But that said, we have to keep in mind, we have given them additional time, even if they were able to bring it in compliance towards the end of this year, the current contract's going to expire, and it's going to have to be renegotiated in some format. So I think a lot of good things were said tonight relative to communication and expectations, but again, the primary focus from the staff standpoint, which I know the council also feels, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the terms of the contract approved by the council are met. So, that said, we're here to really go whatever direction you want, but really, we're trying to get some understanding of where you want to go in the future. And the three alternatives that the staff has laid out is to focus on renegotiating a contract with CMAP for the future. What that might, what that would allow, though, is trying to look at what they realistically might be able services to provide, so that the contract better fits what their capabilities are. Transition to internal management, if that's the desire, fine, but the more important thing is to get the services and the compliance of the law met. And then the hybrid would be if you wish to do an RFP, which of course, CMAP could also apply for that, too, submit a bid and see what services are out there. So we're looking for direction going forward tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugazi, you want to go first?
I mean, given the short timeframe that we have now and the requirements that we have, I think we have to, number one, look at transitioning to internal, but at the same time, I love the idea of the community doing this. I just think it's poor management. I think 20 months onboard and whatever the issues are, I mean, I built a company in 12 months. So it's definitely something I wish would stay with the community, if we can find out a way, after taking it internally, how we can go back, Harjo, to say, "These are the things we'd like you to do, and they seem like that you're capable of this, you've made some changes, we want you to do this." That's where I stand on this, but we do have these, you know, requirements of us that we have to also take on.
Councilmember Ramirez?
You know, to somewhat echo council member Fugazi, with my nonprofit background, this, I'm stressed about this, because while conceptually, I absolutely want public access and transparency and everything that CMAP is supposed to be, I have some significant concerns about the lack of compliance, and that's, you know, coming from not just like Mr. Kilgore talked about with our fiduciary responsibility, but it's also, from a nonprofit background, I'm concerned about that. So, you know, perhaps a hybrid or something. You know, I would be open to a number of different things, hybrid, internal management, six months to get everything going with proof of absolute service and programming. But there needs to be a time limit, I think.
Councilmember Barco.
Yeah, you don't have on there to give them three months, six months, whatever, and for them to get into compliance. Do you think it would make any difference?
Well, hold on, Harjo, one second.
I'll let Harjo, go ahead.
I don't have enough information to comfortably state that that time period would allow them to come into compliance for all aspects.
And I was going to add, is the contract is going to expire, terminate, so we would have to renegotiate another contract anyway. So I think what we're going, we're looking at is, do you want us to solely negotiate with CMAP for a new contract, or do a hybrid and let others possibly submit? And during that, we could also see if there are some potential internal expenditures that might fix also. So there's several options. We just want to get a sense from you, do you want us to negotiate with CMAP, or possibly go out and see if others might be also interested?
Okay. I don't agree that we should bring this in-house. I think we need to leave it alone. And I would prefer to keep it with CMAP. If we can work with them to get things straightened out to our standards, I would prefer to go that route. So, you know, I would think we could go, I mean, you should be able to whip up a short-term contract for, you know, six months, and while we're negotiating and trying to straighten this out. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I know, it talks about relationships, and very important, and I understand that aspect of it. I also know from a nonprofit, the responsibilities you have, and now being on council, you're talking about public funds and being very transparent with that. We expect that, and so I kind of lean towards what council member Barco talks about, and giving it that time, and working at it, more so than the other aspects of this. So that's just my thought.
Councilmember Marks?
I, too, would like to see maybe a short-term contract of six months negotiated with them. I think they've heard how we feel, we've heard the report, you know what you need to do, and I'd like to see you have the six months to turn it around and get it done and keep it local. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so a couple of things we have to remember here, is that how staff has presented and what we've heard from the folks here this evening, there's two things going on here, right? There is the contract that exists now, right, that was from 2020 to 2025, right? And that's what I believe that you, that staff has reported, that they're out of compliance, and I believe that the CMAP folks have acknowledged that there's some compliance issue. So there's that issue. And there's also the issue that's presented with us up on this board, and that is, moving forward, it sounds like this council does not want to lose the opportunity to continue working with CMAP. Is that, is that safe, that part? Is that safe to say? Is everybody okay with that? So it sounds like to me that we, anyone jump in here, but it sounds like to me, considering the second part that I just talked about, this renewed CMAP agreement under a restructured scope, that staff, we would be asking staff to go back and consider the needs of this community and this, and the city of Gilroy in 2026 through 2030, right? Because this is what we're considering now, the next five years, right? Correct?
It could be five years, it could be whatever.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Okay, thank you. Cancel the amount of years I just said. Looking forward after 2025. What city administrator Kilgird keeps talking about is that we have a current agreement right now that's in place, that expires on 2025, and what this, this is administrative. At this point in time, this is administrative, correct? That this is not what's up for debate at this moment in time, right? This is a staff administrative issue to deal with compliance or non-compliance or acceptance. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
City manager, administrator?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you guys, go ahead.
Can I make a point?
Please.
I think, I tend to be overly dramatic. This is what happens when you get my age and you've been doing inner work for so many years, and my wife tells me to stop doing this. Anyway, so we have a contract. It has all these responsibilities. CMAP wants to continue to provide some services to the city, whatever those are. They may end up being less, but we'll have a contract with CMAP to provide some of those services. We have a fiduciary responsibility and a contractual responsibility to make sure whatever that scope of service is set is met. Otherwise, we could be held legally liable, legally liable. So therefore, what I'm trying to say is, we're more than happy to sit down, because I'm hearing sole source with CMAP, give me a sec, sole source CMAP, to negotiate a contract, but I want you to know, it's not three months, it's not six months. It's creating a contract that we both can live with, that they can perform under, and we're comfortable, and they can provide the information needed. It's not going to be easy. You're still working on building your organization. So we're more than happy to sit down with CMAP representatives, have this discussion, but we will be looking to them to sit down and say, "This, we know we can provide this, we know we can do this, and we can meet those requirements." Fair enough? Okay.
Brad, if I can add, does that mean, that's why I was saying, it's going to expire before we can get that done?
Yes.
Right? So therefore, it's going to transition to internal management by default, right? And then we're going to basically work toward creating some new form of some new contract.
Right, and...
That's why I said it the way I said it, because that's essentially what's going to happen.
Right, but I wanted, yes, yes, sir. I wanted to say, there wasn't something we could whip up and do for a few months. We've got to sit down and build this thing so it works for both parties.
So to be clear from council, we are not interested in a transition to our internal management, we are not interested in a hybrid issue, an RFP to some outside city or state far, far away from here. We are interested in the city of Gilroy reviewing the needs of this community and working with CMAP for a future agreement. Does that work?
That's number one state, yep.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. Brad, could we write into the contract that we have an update in six months after the contract has been issued, just to see that things are progressing or what's happening?
Let me sit down with staff. I have the same thought you did, is...
A short leash.
I wasn't going to put it that way.
But as you said before, that an agreement will be based on the needs of this community and what they can agree to.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is, because of these things, with everything going on, they're busy, we're busy, is that we need to get started on it now, not later, and we need to come back and give the council an update, where we are on this, so that you have a sense that we're making progress.
And they're making progress.
Well, together, we're making progress.
Thank you.
One last comment, Mr. Sanchez?
Just a brief one.
And then this study session will come to an end, and we need to get to the next...
Regarding the compliance issues that we are quote-unquote "not going to meet," we have communicated to Harjo in particular, but city staff in general, that we will meet these compliance issues before the end of this contract. Now, I wish it could have been sooner. We had a CPA firm back in May, I'm sorry, March, because we couldn't get a meeting with city staff. It kicked it out till August before we could even start our year-end reviews and our audit. So it has to be said that it's a two-way street. We have been trying uphill, and I'm used to hard struggles, but this has been one of the harder ones that I've had to deal with. We want to be in compliance, we will be in compliance. I've given all the dates, they're in your packets. That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And you need to, we have issues like that, date, time, don't, don't, well, this happened and that.
Sorry, in your packet. No, 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 we're done, this session's over. Thank you very much, Mike. We got to get to the next meeting. Thank you very much, staff. Come back in 11 minutes, please, for the next meeting. Thank you very much.
You were frantic when you came through the door.
Did you see me running? Well, we were all thinking. What did I, what did I look like?
Make sure.
I love it, everything was going fine, and then right then we get this.
I love it, everything was going fine, and then right then we get this.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Okay, let's call the official Monday, November 3, 2025 meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco, Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marx.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here. 1.3, cities and clerks reporting on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda was posted on Monday, October 27 at 4 o'clock PM.
Okay, pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Ramirez. Please remain standing for invocation.
Please join us, live, by pledge of allegiance, certified of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical and the legislative law.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have the privilege to do the invocation this evening, so let us pray. Father, we come before you, we just want to thank you, God, just for the opportunity to serve our community. We pray, Father God, for wisdom, insight, discernment. We pray for the city council, the mayor, the law enforcement, medical, fire, and all the other departments that serve our community. We thank you, in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, item 1.6, orders of the day, we have none. Items 1.7, we're going to jump right to employee introductions. Utilities Director Heath McCann introducing Jay Kuntumnani. I'm so sorry if I got that name wrong, I should have reviewed it. I'm going to find out right now how bad that was.
Jay Kuntumnani.
Oh, man, not even close.
I was close, but anyway. All right, good evening, Mayor, everybody, City Council, public, good to see you tonight. I'm pleased to introduce a new member to the utility department. And Jay joined us as an engineer one. He'll be primarily working on tasks related to SCRA, multiple tasks there and projects over at the treatment plant. Jay recently earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in mechanical engineering from UC Riverside, graduating with honors, and also passed his Fundamentals of Engineering exam, which allows him to become an EIT, Engineering and Training, with the state of California. Before joining the city of Gilroy, he gained some experience in both public utilities and advanced research environments. At Southern California Gas Company, supported the planning and design of capital improvements for pipeline and pressure regulating infrastructure. And he also interned at Hyonex Incorporated, where he contributed to research and development process optimization. Early in his academic career, he worked as a pediatric rehabilitation technology lab for a lab company, designing wearable assistive devices to support children with movement impairments. Outside of work, he enjoys rock climbing, volleyball, and trying out new hobbies. Please welcome Jay.
Hi, my name is Jay Kuntumnani, and I recently graduated. And through my career, short career, in school, I learned that I had a real passion for sustainability and infrastructure. I'm really grateful for the city to grant me this opportunity to serve the community and put those passions to good use.
Thank you. Okay, next, Captain Luke Powell will be introducing two. They're not new employees.
One is new. Yes. It is my pleasure to introduce two new employees to the city of Gilroy Police Department and the city team. First up will be Officer Michael Defretis. Michael started on November 1. Michael grew up in Belmont, California, where he was raised by his mother and grandparents. In 2019, he purchased a home and moved to Gilroy, where he's proud to be a member of our community. Michael's career path has been diverse. He has worked in customer service, retail, food service, and the medical field. He also spent time as a personal trainer and self-defense coach. And for six years, he worked as a union electrician in Santa Clara County. Feeling called to service, feeling called to serve his community in a deeper way, Michael joined the Gilroy Police Department in March of 2024 as a community service officer, where he handled vehicle abatement, graffiti abatement, animal control, and cold case investigations. Inspired by the character, compassion, and professionalism of the officers he worked with, Michael decided to pursue his dream of becoming a police officer. He recently graduated from the South Bay Police Academy and is eager to begin serving the Gilroy community in this new capacity. Outside of work, Michael enjoys spending time outdoors, walking and hiking with his wife and their dogs. He is a fan of movies and science fiction, a fitness enthusiast, and an avid martial artist who trains and competes in jujitsu and MMA. Please help me welcome Officer Michael Defretis to the city of Gilroy.
It's an honor to be here, guys. I've worked really hard and been in this town for a couple of years now, and I truly just love our community. It's part of the reason I stepped up to try to help. The officers of Gilroy and the people of Gilroy are some of the best people I've met. So, like I said, it's an honor to be here. Thank you for this opportunity. And if you ever see me out there and you feel like you want to stop and talk, I'm always here.
All right, up next will be Police Officer Camilla Aguilar. Camilla started on November 2. Camilla is a proud first-generation college graduate who earned her degree from Sacramento State University. She recently completed the South Bay Police Academy, where she trained to become a sworn police officer. Before beginning her law enforcement career, Camilla gained a wide range of experience in both customer service and public safety. Holding roles, sorry, as a grocery store cashier, game master at an escape room, and community service officer for a university police department. One of her most meaningful professional experiences came right here in Gilroy, where she served as an intern with the South County Youth Task Force. That experience strengthened her passion for community engagement and public service, inspiring her to return to Gilroy as a police officer. Outside of work, Camilla enjoys watching films, spending time with friends and family, and exploring new places. She is excited to be in the next chapter and looks forward to serving and growing with the Gilroy community. Please join me in welcoming Camilla to the city of Gilroy.
Hi there, everybody. My name is Camilla Aguilar. It's an honor to be here, and I'm very excited to work with you guys. And just how Michael said, if you guys ever want to stop by and say hi to me, please let me know, and I'll be here and talk and just have a nice time with you guys. Very excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Powell. You guys have no obligation, you're welcome to stay here all night if you like. You have no obligation to stay. Let's see who's going to go first. Okay, moving on to item number two, ceremonial items, proclamation. I have one proclamation today, an Arbor Day proclamation, which will be accepted by Parks and Rec Commission Chair Luis Ramirez. Okay, city of Gilroy proclamation. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, together with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim November 3, 2025, as Arbor Day, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you. All right, you're welcome. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, public. I invite everybody to come join us for Arbor Day. We're actually going to be planting some trees on Wednesday at 10 a.m. at Sidney Casper Park. This is something we've done. We've been part of Tree City USA since 1979. It's a tradition that we've honored every single year. And on Wednesday, we do it again, maintaining Gilroy as a tree city, keeping it green and keeping it healthy. So, thank you, invite you all there. Good luck. Everyone wants me.
Absolutely.
Everybody wants me.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you all. Obligations stay, right? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, presentations to council, public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Any public comments?
Yes, I have five speakers currently. I, Greg Philios, followed by Adam Jasso and Sheri Jasso.
Thank you. Honorable public servants, you see me wearing my Vote It Matters t-shirt. This is, I have a number of different Vote shirts. This is the last night I get to hound you for getting out to your constituents and reminding them that it is important to vote. You guys, it's the last night, so I'll find something else to hound you about. But for tonight and tomorrow, I'll be wearing this. Over the weekend, I, at the Frienda Festival, it was a great, great crowd. Lots of different organizations had booths, and at every booth, I made sure that I said, "Hey, when you see people, tell them voting matters." Okay, so now, no matter what happens in the results of the election, no matter what happens, you're still going to see us on Saturdays here. So just to let you know that, no matter what the results are, you're going to see us, our group, we have a group of, you know, we average 35 to 40, sometimes more, sometimes less, on the corner of First and Santa Teresa every Saturday at 12 noon, spreading our message. So, so you'll still be seeing us, and we just want you to be aware that we are there, and we want people to vote, and we don't say, and again, we don't say, we just want people to be informed voters, so voting is important. And we don't say who you should vote for, but the idea of getting people to vote, getting people informed, spread that message. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry, who's next, Kim?
Adam Jasso, followed by Sheri.
Mayor, city council members and public. My name is Adam Hasso, and this is my wife Sheri Hasso. My wife and I live on Forest Street in Gilroy Long Miller Slough. My mother Martha Hasso, who couldn't be here tonight, owns the house across the slough from us. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my wife, my mother, and myself, and to bring to your attention an issue that I'm sure you're all well aware of and at some level have been dealing with, that is, the presence of homeless folks who reside in the slough, and the question of who is responsible for cleaning up their debris. In part, I understand the rationale behind requiring the homeowner to clean up the debris because it is legally their property. I discovered that through speaking with Feliciano Aguilar of Santa Clara Valley Water. In June, I called to inform Valley Water of the presence of the homeless folks in the slough and the debris they had generated, and to ask if they had plans for cleaning it up. He informed me that Valley Water had zero jurisdiction because the slough passed through our property boundaries. In September, my wife and I, as well as my mother, began receiving letters from the city of Gilroy requiring us to fill out a 602 PC enforcement form and to have it notarized and taken to the police department, which we did. The letter also instructed us to put up no trespassing signs with particular language, which we also did. Eventually, we received a citation in the amount of $200 for not cleaning up the homeless folks' debris. folks' debris. We've also received an additional citation letter, increasing the amount to $400 for not meeting the deadline. On June 23rd of this year, about four and a half months ago, the homeless encampment became so large that I called the City of Gilroy's non-emergency phone number to request help in having these folks removed. An officer came out, Christopher Silva by name, and asked them to leave. They eventually left, and it was then my responsibility to remove the debris. Approximately 20, a 20-yard dumpster of debris was removed. In late August, the homeless folks slowly returned. I went down into the slough and informed them that they were on private property and needed to leave. Some left and most stayed. One of them told me that they had returned to this location because they had asked, they had been asked to leave another area downstream. They had previously excavated a side of the bank here to create a level area so it was convenient, so it was a convenient place to return to camp, and they've also dug other trenches there as well, thus altering the water course, as Matt Jones, the Deputy Director of Public Works, observed when looking at what the homeless folks had been doing. This is not a new issue. On November 14th, 2022...
Okay. You can take over. I'll continue from Sheri.
Yeah, good.
On November 14th, 2022, almost three years ago, I received a letter from the Code Enforcement Officer, Scott Barron, regarding the same subject with similar requirements and penalties for not cleaning up the debris. Here is a portion of my email response to him regarding this. Quote, "I hope that you are not serious about me cleaning up this mess in the slough and issuing a citation if I have not. Addressing the homelessness and the results of it, their trash is not my responsibility unless by force of law you make it my responsibility. It seems like the city officials should be seeking to address the issue of homelessness, and while they are working on it, cleaning up the debris that the transients create." I included my mother's name above in this letter, Martha Hasso, because she's the owner of the property across the slough and also received a letter. I'm writing on her behalf as well, with due respect and thanks for your service to the community. Again, that was a quote from a letter that my husband sent to the Code Enforcement Officer almost three years ago. Now I'm asking that this citation be canceled or whatever the correct language is. I do not want to be charged or cited for a problem that I did not create. Before I was cited, I addressed the problem in June of this year, and now it has returned. Even if I were to address this problem again now or pay the fine and the city were to address it, it will return. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you very much.
Ron Kirkish, followed by Linda Birdy.
I'm sorry to hear that, folks. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Community. There's a couple of things I'd like to speak about real quick tonight. Number one is the great work that our city administrator, you guys, and our Public Works Department, and the head on the streets. We've made great progress on several of the streets in Gilroy, and I really appreciate it, and I hope the Public Works people hear this because they need to have their slap on the back too for doing a great job for this community. On another note, this weekend, I was, I was informed this morning by somebody in San Jose that we had an assault against a police officer, a Gilroy police officer, this weekend. The assault, the officer hurt his hand pretty badly, I understand. And the officer's name is Brett Bakely, and he's, from what I understand, he's going to be out for a long time. So, I just want to let our police officers know that I do hear stuff, and I want to report it, I want to expose it to the community so that you all understand how bad this problem can be too and how dangerous police work is. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda?
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Linda Birdy. I wanted to just say what's happening in my neighborhood and all around my neighborhoods with the allowance of all these ADUs being put in. They, I know it's not the city's problem in a sense because they're being mandated from the state, but is there anything the city can do about it? They are leaving trash, they're bringing down the values of the homes, the streets are overrun with cars, and so are the alleys, which are dangerous because a vehicle like a fire engine would not be able to get through. And I just want to know what can be done to help homeowners like me who have been paying taxes, keep my yard up, and try and make it a pleasant community to live in when people can move in multiple families, build multiple units, and then just trash the place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, oh, go ahead, yes.
Two quick comments. On the ADU, we do have some illegal ADUs in the community, and I would suggest you talk to Sharon, our Community Development Director. She can check out your area because the standards definitely have to take into account fire access and those types of issues. So, if there are some legitimate problems with those, speak to them. Also, to, yeah, our Code Enforcement Officer speaking to the two individuals. The attorney was going to mention, and the reason I'm doing this, we're not allowed to discuss it, but this is public information. You do have a right to appeal on a citation, but this is, these are older ones, and I think it was a previous administration that took a different approach to dealing with the enforcement issues. And so, I think they should bring that also to the attention of community development. We'll see what we can do.
Okay, moving on to item number four, reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco.
The only thing I have, I'd like to wish my colleague, Councilmember Marks, happy birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday. Councilmember, Councilmember Fugazi.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, one year younger. But I would just like to say congratulations to the Law Afrenda Committee. It looked like a wonderful celebration, great music, the paseo looked beautiful. So, many more to come in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, after more than two years of public discussion, technical analysis, and refinement, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Association of Bay Area Governments have released the Draft Plan Bay Area 2050 plus and the Plan Bay Area 2050 Draft Environmental Impact Report for review and comment. Unique to this plan is the Parallel Transit 2050 Planning Effort, which culminated in the first-of-its-kind plan to re-envision the future of Bay Area public transportation in partnership with transit operators across the region. You can read the, read online the Draft Plan Bay Area 2050 reports, and public comments are due by December 18th. I'd like to thank VTA and their staff for sponsoring and attending the Law Afrenda Festival and Wellness Fair this past weekend. They had their pink wrapped Law Afrenda bus there on display with two booths where they were sharing programs and projects as well as answering questions about current transit options. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, SVC does not receive federal funding and staff anticipates no direct financial impacts from government shutdown. However, there will likely be indirect impacts, including delays in energy project permitting, interruptions in rebates and reimbursements made to member agencies, and a potentially general negative impact on the regional economy. SVC faces many challenges in building a clean, reliable, and affordable supply portfolio and meeting its 100% carbon-free target. These challenges including, include increasing costs, expanding the regulation, and growing load. Despite these challenges, SVC hits its target every year and with the expectation of 2024, in which the goal was relaxed due to market conditions. I'd like to personally thank SVC and their staff for sponsoring and attending the Law Afrenda Festival and Wellness Fair this past weekend. They were there sharing programs and projects as well as answering questions. SVC has been a founding partner since the beginning. And lastly, I just wanted to thank, send a quick thank you to our city staff from Gilroy from across all departments that either worked the festival or attended on their own. Your presence and direct interaction with the festival attendees and the lead committee was noticed and appreciated. Gilroy's Law Afrenda Festival is bringing together a cross-section of sponsorships and partnerships from government, education, health, private sector, arts, transportation, culture, nonprofits, labor workforce, and more. Having our staff play an active part in the festival shows your willingness for collaboration and leadership in our community, so I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez.
So, I'd like to also echo my congratulations to the Law Afrenda team. Great festival, great event for our downtown community as well. Also, congratulations to the library. They had a ceremony on Saturday morning where they had the story walk, where they have their storyboards out on display. You can walk through the park and read the story, and they're, you know, they're integrating play and literacy, both off-site there at Christmas Hill as well as at the library. And I also want to encourage my fellow council members. I did a ride along with the police department, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago, and I know that that was my third time doing it in the last couple of years, and I know that the chief sent out an email to all of you. It's really a great way to learn about the challenges that they face, you know, on a day-to-day basis and ask a lot of questions. And I am looking forward to my next ride along with the fire department next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein.
A report.
I have one report from the Gilroy Gardens Board of Directors. I'm looking forward to our meeting at the end of November, where we will be having a strategic plan session, which is a reflection of the new leadership at the Gilroy Gardens Board of Directors that, as they've begun to shift from a mode of survival into a mode of sustainability and longevity. So, I'm very, looking forward to that, and I'll be reporting back after that meeting. So, moving on to the item number five, it's the consent calendar. I entertain a motion for the, to approve the consent calendar of 5.1 through 5.4.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez and a second by Councilmember Marks. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passed at 7-0. Quick comment, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Our utilities director, he wanted me to mention that he's very proud of his staff. This deals, the report that you adopted tonight, this plan. Our sewer units have been able to maintain our sewer lines from overflows, beating most cities and counties within the state. And so, that's a compliment to the staff, and it's a compliment to you giving them the resources they need to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, bids and proposals. 6.1, award a contract to FBD Vanguard Construction, Inc., for the fiscal year 2026, CDBG Sidewalk and Curb Ramp, Project Number 26-PW-303, in the amount of $156,820. Improve a project contingency of $19,370.14, and approve a total project expenditure of $176,190.14 for construction. Staff report, please.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Bozo, staff in the public. I'm Nisha Patel, City Engineer, and I'm pleased to present tonight a word of a construction contract to FBD Vanguard Construction, Inc., for the fiscal year 2026, CDBG Sidewalk and Curb Ramp project. And the project location is on the east side of Monterey, between 10th Street and Lucesca. It's between the existing Monterey Gateway Apartments and the future Rome Apartment Development. And the project is, again, between those two housing projects. The Rome project is currently underway. Some onsite work is being done right now. Construction is expected to begin in full this summer, and there is also a city project of installing a Hawk Signal to provide a controlled mid-block crossing across Monterey Street in front of the Monterey Gateway Apartments. The Hawk Signal project is expected to advertise for bids in spring 2026 and start construction in summer 2026. So, the details of the project. The project will construct sidewalk, curb, gutter, and associated improvements. It will provide a sidewalk connection from the existing Monterey Gateway Apartment sidewalk and the new sidewalk being constructed, funding the Rome Builders Apartment project. These improvements will also provide pedestrian connectivity from the Rome Builders Apartment project to the future Monterey Gateway Senior Apartment pedestrian safety improvements, that Hawk pedestrian crossing that I spoke about. The project will also improve pedestrian safety and accessibility. The city participates in HUD CDBG program, which allows the city to receive an annual allocation of CDBG funds. The CDBG capital improvement allocation for the project was approved by City Council in June 2025. The fiscal year 2026 grant awarded to the city was in the amount of $176,190.14. The project location was chosen because it fills a critical link between the two housing projects where there's currently no sidewalk. The project can be constructed within the allocated budget, and it will improve safety and accessibility to pedestrians and the disabled. On September 19th, 2025, the city advertised for bids for the project, and October 9th, we had the bid opening for the project. We received five bids. One bid was disqualified and deemed non-responsive, and we continued to review the bids, and FBD Vanguard Construction was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid of $156,820. And today, staff is requesting the city council award a construction contract and improve the construction contingency. The proposed contract with FBD Vanguard Construction is in the amount of $156,820. Staff is also requesting a construction contingency of $19,370.14, which is the remaining budget for the project, which is 11 point, I mean, 12.35% of the construction contract. The total construction allocation would be $176,190.14, and the funding is coming from, fully coming from CDBG grant funds. So, staff is recommending the city council award a contract to FBD Vanguard Construction, Inc., in the amount of $156,820. Approve a construction contingency of $19,370.14. This is for unforeseen construction conditions. Approve a total project expenditure of $176,190.14, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. If the council approves a contract with FBD Vanguard Construction tonight, staff will finalize the construction project schedule, and the city administrator will execute the contract. Construction is expected to begin in November 2025. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for staff? Okay, public comment?
I have no comments.
All right. I'll just jump, oh, go ahead.
I just have a, just a quick comment back, like, you know, this is a, when we were, when we built the Monterey Gateway Apartments or started the approval process, we tried to condition them to build all these sidewalks, right, to go all the way to 10th Street. So, I just want to give some, you know, thanks to staff. I know both of you weren't here when that, when that occurred, and you kind of picked this up, great job on your first presentation. But this, this project and that overlay is a perfect example of, you know, when we have relationships with our federal partners, our state electeds, you know, it was Representatives, State Senator John Laird, who got $350,000 of budget appropriations, and then Representative Zolofkran, $350,000 to get that Hawk Crosswalk in there. And then, of course, using the federal... of course, using the federal HUD funds, you know, to get that CDBG. So just a great example of where we're running thin margins. We have a lot of stuff that we want to do through our general plan, and having those relationships gets stuff done like this. So just want to say thank you. And if no one else has any other comments or anything, I'd be happy to make a motion when we're ready.
A second. Okay. I'll entertain a motion by Councilmember Hilton with a second by Councilmember Klein to award a contract to FBD Vanguard Construction, Incorporated for fiscal year 2026, CDBG Sidewalk and Curb Ramp Project Number 26 PW303 in the amount of 176,190.14, including the cost of project and contingencies. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Councilmember Ramirez. Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item number seven, 7.1, introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 54 of the Gilroy City Code relating to accessory dwelling units, Z25-02. Before we go to staff report, are there any ex parte communications to report by council? None. Okay, take it away, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me track this down. Thank you, Director Govey, and also thank, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Michael Vasati. I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Gilroy. And I'd like to present to you the ADU ordinance update for 2025. Accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are residential units that can be built on lots that contain either a single-family residence or a multifamily residence, like an apartment building. They come in all shapes and sizes, including detached, attached, built inside the existing residence on the lower level, attached to a detached garage above that detached garage, or by converting an existing attached garage into an ADU. ADUs provide a fast, low-impact way of adding new housing within existing neighborhoods. California has a severe housing shortage. Developing ADUs is a large part of California's strategy to address the issue, as ADUs promote sustainable development and expand affordability without large-scale new infrastructure. Every year, the state of California passes laws to promote ADU development. Local jurisdictions must adopt these laws to remain compliant with the state's housing policies while doing our best to protect residents' interests, as well stated by Ms. Berti. Tonight, we will be discussing these laws with you and explain how the City of Gilroy will remain compliant with state housing policy. We will first review the state laws that impact ADU development. As stated in the staff report, recent state legislation has established new requirements for ADUs, including Senate Bill 477, Assembly Bill 2533, Senate Bill 1211, and Senate Bill 1077. Each of these bills impact ADU legislation in unique ways. To start, SP477 renumbered and reorganized previous legislation to, into multiple statutes, aiming to make the laws more organized. Next, AB2533, which took effect in January of this year, was designed to help legalize unpermitted ADUs. The goal of this law is to create a program for older, unpermitted ADUs and JADUs without homeowners facing fines, penalties, or demolition orders. The focus of this law will, will still be to preserve fundamental health and safety standards compared to broader building code requirements. In addition, 1211, SP1211 allowed more ADUs on multifamily properties and streamlined ADU permitting on coastal towns. The major code updates that the city took advantage of were as follows. Government Code Section 65852 was a single lengthy statute with many complex subsections and extensive details. SP477 repealed that code section and replaced it with 33 shorter, clearer sections for easier use. Our current code prohibits short-term rentals in ADUs, while state law now requires deed restrictions to protect those. State law doesn't allow the ADU to be sold separately, except in a special case involving a qualified nonprofit organization. And the state added clarifying language to bar local governments from imposing additional design restrictions on by right ADUs that include units of at least 800 square feet and no far, and at least four feet from the side and rear lot line. Additional zoning amendments include removing the one-story limit and allowing developers to provide covered or uncovered parking spaces to meet ADU requirements. The amendments also remove exterior stairways facing public streets as a reason to deny an ADU. In multifamily zones, up to eight detached ADUs are allowed, but the actual number depends on the number of existing residential dwelling units on the property. So for example, if someone owns a fourplex, they're able to build a maximum of four ADUs, one ADU per each one residential unit. These are state mandates, by the way. New laws added definitions and standards. For example, the definition of livable space was created. Also, language was updated in our local city code to remain consistent with HCD guidance. Just for clarity, HCD stands for the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Lastly, the state law has mandated that local design standards do not prevent the construction of a by right ADU. As with all zoning amendments, the city must find consistency with the 2040 general plan goals and policies to recommend for approval. And staff found the amendment consistent as it supports the goal of promoting diverse housing for livable neighborhoods. Additionally, the amendment supports the housing element goals by encouraging unit production and removing regulatory barriers. At their October 16 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended City Council approve the updated ADU ordinance by a vote of six zero with one absent. So in closing, staff recommends the three following items. Determine the proposed ordinance as statutorily exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15252H, which refers to the adoption of an ordinance regarding second units in a single-family or multifamily residential zoning district by a city or county to implement the provisions of Government Code Section 66314 and 66333, as set forth in Public Resources Code Section 21080.17. A motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive the further reading of the ordinance and to introduce the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Chapter 50, Article 54 of the Gilroy City Code relating to accessory dwelling units. This concludes staff summary of the proposed ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I see someone up on the board here. So far, I have Councilmember Fugazi, questions.
So I remember when I was on the Planning Commission, and we had some of this come through a couple of years ago, I asked the question, what of this is mandated versus what of it is discretionary that's coming through as changes? Can you, can you itemize or just say, is it all mandated?
Everything here is mandated. There's nothing that the city, the only non-mandated item was to happen when I believe you were on the commission, where the by right ADUs I was referencing typically are 800 square feet. The state, the state doesn't allow the city, or has limited, the city has limited discretion to not allow 800 square foot ADUs. The City of Gilroy in 2023 allowed that for 1,000 square foot ADUs.
So that, that's the one discretionary thing. Okay, because that's the only one I recognized out of it. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss one.
Yes.
The, the next thing is, in the definitions section, I didn't see anything that said what car share is.
Car share, sure, I could speak at car share.
Do we have to put that in the definitions? Because it doesn't speak to it at all, and it seems kind of ambiguous.
We, I'll share why we have the definition in there, and then I'll share, it's the City Council's discretion. The state requires us to, if someone wants to remove a parking space, because there's a car share facility allowed in their area, then the city has to approve it. The reason why it's in our city code is because typically when, when planners, when someone submits an ADU, we go to our city code for reference. By not having it in there and someone saying, I'm a part of a car share program, which may not be happening in Gilroy, but in the future, I'm a part of a car share program where there's a Zipcar adjacent to my property.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, so Zipcar is one. If I get a share ride on an Uber, is that a car share?
Dedicated car share, right.
It's not defined in here, though, is exactly how it is.
And what happens if the car share, dedicated car share moves? There's nothing, there's nothing we can do about it.
You got to turn hot.
That's my understanding.
Agreed.
Okay, so we don't need any language that says what a car share is?
No, because I, it's.
Because it's intended to be ambiguous.
Yes.
I can't.
How many times have they defined half mile from a transit stop?
Right. Okay. Okay, the last question I have is, there didn't seem to be any parking requirements, and I saw one other thing on there too, for multifamily. So there, you could, if I had a fourplex and I wanted to add four more units, first of all, I can make them any square footage I want, right? Because I saw that on there. And then I don't have to have parking for it, or I do? Because it didn't seem like it was laid out.
No, parking, parking itself is based on location, not whether it's, if it's a detached ADU, and you're not within, I believe, a quarter mile of a bus station, you need to provide a parking space, if it's a detached. So, so it's not.
But those requirements were in the single-family section, I believe, and not in the multifamily section.
We would reference the parking requirements from the single family.
Okay, because they're not. That's why I'm saying, they're not referenced in what you submitted, under the multifamily portion.
I see.
So we might want to be more specific there, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
And I didn't, I didn't recall seeing that there isn't a, a floor space requirement in there either. I saw in your presentation that was there, but you might want to go back and refer to that for multifamily.
No, because of floor space, because they're, and we spoke with HCD specifically about that, because they don't mandate floor space. Are you referring to the size of the ADU itself?
Yeah, so just as an example, right, again, back to a fourplex, somebody has a fourplex already, they have a bunch of carports or whatever in the back, they just tear them down and say, I'm going to build another four units back there. But although I have 700 square foot units in my main fourplex, I'd like to make these 1,500 square feet apiece. They could do that, because.
That is correct.
Because it's different than the single-family one. I just want to make sure the public understands that, too.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
If I may, Councilmember Fugazi, you know, this is predicated on the size of the lot. There's a number of parameters associated with developing.
Of course.
Sure. Other questions?
I'm just wondering if this warrants, you know, down the, down the road a little bit, whether or not we review and determine whether we want to try to update our current ADU ordinance? If there is anything that we can do to try to take back some control? Just food for thought. Yeah, well, we're being, yeah, because we're being mandated by this. But what, reviewing what we.
We can't, we can't hear you guys. Sorry, go ahead and put your mics.
All I'm saying is, we're doing that right now. The action you just talked about is exactly what we're doing right now. So if there's something that you want to add in there, then do it now. The floor is open to do that.
Okay.
That's what this is.
So what is the, the requirement in terms of, my understanding is, they can put ADUs in the front of the home as well?
Well. Actually, if, remember the, the by right ADU? If the city has to, that's kind of a tricky question. First off, I just want to, so we have to speak it out. The city can't preclude an 800 square foot ADU that's four feet from the side and rear lot line. We can't preclude it. So what that means is, if they have the space in their front yard to build an 800 square foot detached ADU, they have a right to do that per state law.
And that can go all the way to the sidewalk. There does.
That's kind of why it's a tricky question. So not if there's, typically sidewalks have easements, so it doesn't mean you can build into an easement. And so what if the adjacent easement precludes that 800 square feet? That's where public health and safety kind of overrules state.
So it's a case by case?
That is correct.
Okay, and then that four foot, is that a, from the wall, or is that from the, the end of the roof? Eaves.
So just to reiterate, so just to make sure I understand, is the four foot setback based on the wall of the ADU to the property line or from the eve? So it's from the, typically it's the wall.
Okay, so the eve can go right next to an adjacent neighboring eve, if you will?
Well, when we reference eaves, there comes to be other standards happening, because now the eve would have to be built in a manner that would, not, not only not encroach, but also meet health and safety guidelines. So the idea is you can't build an eve, and we're just speaking apples to apples, you can't speak to eve where it could catch on fire to affect the other property owner. It would have to be a certain material. So.
So again.
It's case by case.
Case by case.
And, and, you know, I definitely respect the questions. They're really case by case scenarios. The state has really shown the local jurisdictions, all of California cities and counties, that they're looking to allow ADU development, so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hilton.
Yeah, and I just want to remind us, when we say the state and the mandates, there are actually elected people just like us, that we chose democratically to elect that write this legislation to get it into, sign into the law. And we have thousands of people up and down the state of California that are advocates for stuff like this. We are advocates for stuff like this in the City of Gilroy. We actually wrote it in our housing element. It's a goal of ours. We're a part of the county collaborative that has made it easier to, you know, to build ADUs in Gilroy around the county by doing pre-approved ADU plans, right? We do ADU education, we're doing outreach. So, you know, I want us to take a little bit of a step back on this, like, blame it on the state type thing, you know, because they are our partners, they are our electeds. If we want them to come here and talk about bills that they've, that they've gotten passed or whatever, then, you know, let's invite them in. But, so how, how are we going to move forward to ensure that we comply with state law? Because I can tell you that one of the reasons why those, the language was added in there, that, you know, basically if the city doesn't do this process that we're doing right now on an annual basis, like a cleanup language basis, that you're, you're, you just become null and void, because they're not going to sit around and wait for us to enact those changes. So what's our move besides, you know, just having internal conversations, like, we should get this in front of council, we should get this in front of council? Like, why are, why are we not just doing language cleanup, like, every January, like other jurisdictions do? And I know you came from another jurisdiction, so maybe there's a best practice over there that you can bring here.
I could speak to, there's a number of priorities in the City of Gilroy, and there's staff that deal with a lot of these. I, I did fortunately come from another jurisdiction, and what's, what I've appreciated is, is the urgency that bringing this AD ordinance to the council at this time. I, you know, I can't speak on internal operations that had happened six or nine months ago, but I'm really excited about bringing the opportunity and answering these questions about AD ordinances. I can't speak to what's going to happen for the future. I know we've had conversations with HCD, and they seem to be happy with what we're proposing. And we're proposing the minimum standards that they're asking us to propose. And I know that, actually, coming from another jurisdiction, I know that the same standards that are being asked here are being asked in that, that previous city I was working for, so.
Let me go to Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
First, let me say, I will blame it on the state. So I don't have a problem with that. The state of California is encroaching on many cities like Gilroy, who are losing little by little all of our local control. And whenever we have an opportunity to say how we want things to be, and where we have still some room to do it, we should exercise this to figure it out. And to that end, we only have to do 800 feet, right? So it could be up to the council still to change that. At this point, I get that the, that our housing element says one thing, but I just wanted to make that clear. We could change that, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
What happened in 2023 could be changed today. But 800 is the minimum.
Yeah, it's the minimum, but we're doing 1,000 right now. And I just, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying it, it is a place where whatever little control we have, we should make sure that we understand what that is and take any opportunity we can to keep it.
Back to Councilmember Hilton, sorry about that.
Yeah, so put, put that back on the table. 1,000 feet is what we are, what we have chosen in the past to restrict these when we can go higher. So that is our local control. And, but, you know, before we took this action tonight, and maybe the director can come up and talk for a quick second, because, you know, it was, it was me working with her office and the city attorney. office and the city attorney before we went into budget planning session to figure out when we're going to get this back on the, on the agenda, when we're going to be back on the work plan. Because if we want to keep that local control that we have, then we can't let this continue to lapse again and then just be null and void, and someone could just say, you, you guys are not following state law anyways, you haven't for two years, you know, so you're null and void, so I'm going to use the states, which means they could go higher. So that, that, that is exactly what I'm trying to get at, is to say, this should come back every January, whenever there's laws that are rewritten at the end of the, sorry, whenever there's laws enacted at the end of the year, bring those forward in January so we don't lose our local control that we currently have. Does that make sense? Do you not want to bring up the director, or are you trying to like?
No, I'm.
Yeah, time, timeout, timeout.
You know.
Okay, guys, hey. Whoa. Sharon, don't be bashful. I, I understand the discussion that's occurring here, and I'm going to take my part. One is, I get that if we have discretionary discretion, let's be proactive with that. Let's also be proactive in meeting the state requirements, okay? I will also say, in my short time here, that I do know staff has had to set some important things aside in order to get more immediate things the council would like seen done. So when my future, when the future CA gets here, it would be good to have that kind of discussion coupled with what you want to do over here with your other priorities, so that staff can really focus on the key ones and you won't get upset when they don't get one of the other ones done. But with that said, Sharon, Councilmember Hilton asked your question.
Yes, and I think kind of to follow what Brad stated, you know, staff has had to deal with a lot of priorities, because since I've arrived, I've seen priorities keep increasing from the state and also, you know, to meet community needs. And to balance among that and the daily operations, and we all try to prioritize our customers first, too. So, you know, number, number applications and private activity has really increased the last couple of years as well. So just balancing all of that between the state mandated items and the core items, as you've seen, our department's work plan is really large. So it's just all of these things where, you know, staff did bring an update to council, planning commission, then council in 2023. And just in 2024, we had several key retirements of very experienced staff, so that has just resulted in, you know, a slight delay in this. But it has to remain, ADU update has remained in our work plan. And also, we've been trying to work on another item, which is actually bringing an update to council on all the ADU, you can call it, you know, marketing or promotional, educational, you know, activities that we've been trying to work on. And as you named, you know, we updated our website, created ADU gallery, and there are more things that are in the works as well. So we'll be bringing that to council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, I have to agree with Councilmember Fugazi, I feel our neighborhoods are changing dramatically, and I don't feel we have local control any longer, because the state keeps passing these new laws, even though they're, they are our elected officials at the state level, I understand that, but when they got elected, I don't think any of us knew what was coming down the line. And with the number of cars that are increasing, and do they still, does the state allow us to say that it's, what, 1.5 per, I don't know what the point five is for a bedroom, but 1.5 per bedroom? So basically, if you had a two-bedroom ADU, it would only be three people per ADU. Is anyone managing that? Because it seems like there are a lot of cars that come out of a certain ADU. Not only that, but there are a lot of ADUs that are being built without proper standards. You know, when we first got involved in the ADU project, it had to look similar to the actual main house, so it was more of an attribute, not something that you're just going to go, oh my God, I can't believe my neighbor built this. And we have some of that going on right now. And when we talk about the eves, there, there is a property on Doughty in the alleyway that is inches, the two roof lines are inches, one roof line is inches away from the neighbor's roof line. So if you talk about a fire, you bear believe, if one, one ADU caught on fire, it would burn the other structure next to it. That needs to be looked at. I would like to see that we did have more local control to say what our city is going to look like in the future, because I just feel like everything's being blown up at the moment, and 10 years from now, are we going to look at Gilroy's neighborhoods and go, oh my God, what have we done?
I think we, we have to be, I'm going to offer one comment, we need to be a little bit careful about speculating, I, I think there's a little bit of speculation there on, on some of the building codes and what's happening in some of the neighborhoods. If you're talking about downtown Gilroy, like on Doughty Street, there are, those homes in, in that neighborhood are zero lot lines, right? So that means that the piece of, a wall can be and, and was deliberately built on the property line. So let's be careful about.
So that's legal?
That is, it's been legal for, for 80 years in that part of the neighborhood, that's called zero lot line. So it's not unusual, my neighbor's garage wall is on my property line. So we have to keep that in mind. So just because we drive by and see something we don't like, that doesn't mean it's not against, it doesn't mean it's against the law.
No, but there are some other ADUs that I could take you for a ride on that are not in downtown.
No doubt. If, if. We have to be careful if there are some, you know, bad builders and bad development going on, of course we have mechanisms for that, that doesn't mean that we're.
We have to, yeah, we have to make sure those, the mechanisms come into play here if they're not legal.
For sure.
And I know we've come across few, because I've talked to the director about some that have been illegal.
Sure.
So I'm just saying, we have to be vigilant of what we want our community to become.
Don't disagree, yes, counsel.
I hope I have my voice. So Michael or Sharon, under those building codes, we can't limit occupants, like how many per bedroom, we can only limit it per square footage. And that came about, I believe in the, I'm dating myself here, everybody, I think it happened in the 90s, there was some case law about that, where you can't say only, people can only live in the bedrooms or sleep in bedrooms, and you can't, yeah, there was, there was cases about that, but it's occupancies limited by square footage, not by people.
We still need to go to public comments, Sharon, did you have?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit more, yeah, and I think there's some fair housing issues, too, that were raised back then, you know, how do you find familial relationships and the people living, you know, in the bedroom or in the house?
And if people want to live in an overcrowded situation, it's not for us to say, can't do that.
All right, let's go to public comment.
I have no speakers.
Okay. So, Councilmember Hilton.
Yeah, I can start with the motions, if you want. I think we have to do this in three separate ones, right?
Correct, we do.
So first one would be a motion to determine the proposed ordinance to statutory exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CECL guidelines, section 15282 for the adoption of an ordinance regarding second units in a single-family or multifamily residential zone by a city or county to implement the provisions of section 66314 and 66333 of the government code as set forth in section 21080.17 of the Public Resources Code.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton. I'll second it. So I'll take a roll call, please, on that motion.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes, seven, zero.
The next one would be a motion to read the ordinance by title only, away from the readings of the ordinance. That's my motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton. Would anyone like to second it? I'll second. Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Klein, roll call, please.
I'm going to read the title of the ordinance first, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending the Gilroy City Code, Chapter 30, zoning, Article 54, regarding accessory dwelling units. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes, seven, zero, you want to do number three, too?
The motion to introduce the ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending Chapter 30, Article, Article L15 of the city code, Gilroy City Code relating to accessory dwelling units.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton. I'll second. I have a second by Councilmember Klein, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes, seven, zero, thank you, staff, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, moving on to item number 7.2, consider adopting an urgency interim ordinance prohibiting the issuance of tobacco retailer permits for a period of not to exceed 45 days within the downtown specific plan area M25-13. So before going to staff, I'd like to know if there's any ex parte communications of council? No, okay, staff report, please.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, council members, Michael Sadi, again, the planning manager. I'd like to present to you a consideration of adopting an urgency interim ordinance prohibiting issuance of tobacco retailer permits for a period not to exceed 45 days within the Gilroy downtown specific plan area. In 2014, the city adopted an ordinance requiring all tobacco retailers to obtain a tobacco retailer permit. Typically tobacco retailer permits, they're, they're obtained through grocery stores, liquor stores, convenience stores, and currently the city has 50 tobacco retailers, averaging 0.9 retailers per 1,000 residents. But as of 2023, the city has noticed an increase in smoke shops, which is a tobacco retailer that specifically sells products and accessories for smoking, vaping, and potentially flavored tobacco. Several neighboring jurisdictions, such as Morgan Hill, Hollister, and unincorporated areas of Santa Clara and San Bonito Counties, have limited the sale of flavored tobacco and vaping products, particularly in smoke shops. In contrast, Gilroy has implemented restrictions only near schools and lacks broader policies resulting in a higher per capita concentration of tobacco retailers in other cities in the region, as demonstrated within this table. The fact that the city has an over-concentration of tobacco retailers per capita in nearby cities and counties gives the city council the basis to adopt an urgency ordinance to prohibit tobacco retailers for at least 45 days. The city attorney and the community development department collaborated to bring an urgency ordinance to the city council for adoption if you see fit. This slide here is to highlight the mayor's request for council consideration, the ordinance that has been drafted to prohibit tobacco retailers in the downtown area. If the ordinance is adopted, the city will have the ability to deny future business licenses for tobacco retailers for at least 45 days, or December 17, 2025. Adoption will require at least six votes to pass the ordinance, and it will be, it will become effective today, if passed. It is staff's understanding that the concern from the community has to do more with the proliferation of smoke shops rather than tobacco retailers. Unfortunately, smoke shops are not defined in the zoning code. We consider smoke shops as general retail for zoning purposes. As stated in our staff report, there seems to be a concern about the proliferation of smoke shops in the past two years, so we've identified those types of shops on this map. You'll see 10 businesses on the screen, eight of these businesses would be considered smoke shops, while two of them discount cigarettes and cigarettes for less, are mainly cigarette and tobacco retailers. The mayor's concern is not new in California. Staff notes that several other local jurisdictions have recently enacted ordinances, resolutions, and moratoriums to regulate smoke shops. These cities include Stockton, Newport Beach, Riverside, Modesto, La Habra, San Leandro, Richmond, and Santa Clarita. And as I was watching the news this morning, I even found that the city of San Jose will be presenting a similar interim ordinance tomorrow to their city council. These ordinances range from prohibiting the expansion of existing smoke shops to capping the total number permitted in the city. Urgency interim ordinances require specific legislative findings demonstrating a current and immediate threat of public health, welfare, and safety. We believe the proposed urgency ordinance has adequate findings, which includes data that supports the city's concerns of increased consumption negatively impacting smoke-related illnesses, contributing to environmental pollution, visual blight, and supporting higher-use smoking rates. Furthermore, staff has found citing this California Tobacco Health Assessment Tool developed by the Stanford Prevention Research Center and the Green Info Network, a higher density of tobacco retailers in comparison to other cities in county, unincorporated county lands. The staff report provides alternatives that the city council does not believe an urgency interim ordinance is warranted. Here are a list of alternatives. We can adopt the urgency ordinance as directed for consideration, which would only affect the downtown area. The council can consider adopting an urgency ordinance citywide. You can direct staff to draft a non-urgency ordinance, but that would delay the city's ability to prohibit more tobacco retailers for at least 45 days, if not longer, and risk new permits issued during the interim, or simply take no action. The city council's decision may have financial implications, which includes staff time required to do the research and draft an ordinance. Additionally, smoke shops sell retail goods that contribute to sales tax revenues. While staff has researched the sales tax generated by those types of shops, we have not determined the exact tax revenue loss of future retailers. Assuming the city council adopts the urgency interim ordinance, it would become effective immediately. Staff would bring this item back to a later date to city council within that 45-day period, but urgency ordinances can last for up to two years if directed by council. Current tobacco retail permits or businesses with active business licenses would not be affected. So in closing, staff recommends the city council adopt the urgency interim ordinance establishing a temporary prohibition on the issuance or approval of any new tobacco retailer permits within the downtown specific plan area within the city of Gilroy pursuant to government code, section 65858, and make the findings as incorporated in the reference that adoption of the ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare, particularly regarding the protection of minors within the downtown specific plan area. This concludes staff's summary of the proposed urgency ordinance, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Questions by council?
I have a question, just.
None of mine. Go ahead, I'll go councilmember Ramirez, then I'll go councilmember Fugazi, sorry, I'm not seeing them up here, sorry, you guys.
Oh, I keep forgetting.
Go ahead, it's okay.
You know, is it legal to have something on the books saying that if you are, if you have a smoke shop and you are in violation, like we've, we've had several of them recently in violation of what they're selling? Close, down for good?
How I, how I understand the, the regulations that are, they have a, a smoke, they have a tobacco business, they have a tobacco permit, and if they're in violation of that, that permit can be revoked, and we have the enforcement control over that. But it doesn't have distance or it has requirements of how close they can be to schools, but it doesn't have how close they can be next to another one, so we can't, we could only if they were in violation of their current tobacco permit license that's on the books now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi.
So ostensibly, we're looking to protect kids, is that kind of like the big part of why we're doing this, you think? Is that the, is that the impetus why this is an urgent matter?
I believe so, that took. Yes, yes.
Okay. So, so the question I have is, okay, we already have smoke shops and tobacco places, and in fact, they've been in violation, and we have some that are within 1,000 feet of schools already, and we have recently a bust on a bunch of these smoke shops already. How has the enforcement been so far with our current ordinance and current licensing-type requirements? Has it been enforced?
In, in the, as of recent, for the.
Okay, I'd like to ask both Sharon and Luke to come up.
If I may.
Sure.
I mean, one of the things that I did read in ordinance is there's obviously a, a financial penalty if you sell to minors, right? And there are revocation elements in there. And I, of course, asked a couple of questions, one of which is, there are smoke shops that are within 1,000 feet of schools, and that we had a bust recently that was a coordinated thing for mushrooms and, and other paraphernalia or what have you. So if you can, yeah, explain to us how all of that works and how it's worked in the past, and if we've revoked things, some of the history.
Yeah, I think I can only share kind of the recent history, because this permit slash license isn't regulated or issued by our department, but, you know, because of the research on this urgency ordinance, it has come to our attention. So I've had our code enforcement team looking at their business license status, and that's how we've been finding out, some of them do not have a valid business license. And as we were visiting these properties, you know, these facilities, and we noticed some. some might also have illegal products for sale, and so we've also contacted our PD partners on some of those facilities.
This is recently that you did that?
This is recent, yes, because the permit is not issued by our department, and it's because of this ordinance that, you know, we've been tasked to work on. That's how we became aware.
So the one on the map there, you showed a bunch of them on the map, some of those that are on that map do not have currently a license to sell tobacco products?
I believe so, correct.
And yet, we're still going to let them, we're not going to go in and tell them no more, or?
No, we have.
All right.
Go ahead, Brett.
So I think there's a little confusion. I think you...
I'm getting to a point.
I'm sorry, I figured you were, but there are three questions I heard are the ones that are currently operating, operating legally.
Well, she gave new information, that's why I was following up on that new information.
Right, right. And then, two, if they are operating, and I'm not illegally from a land use standpoint versus a license purpose versus they're selling things out of there that are not in conformance with either. And so what I'm hearing from staff, sorry, back up. Part of the challenge, and this has happened like with businesses license too, is those are usually issued by finance, and they usually do not have necessarily a land use component tied to it. In our case, we do the schools as an example, the one that you brought up. And so with the question that you raised, staff is now going back for those that were by right, did not require a land use permit, only a license through finance to double-check those. So they're going to go back. Now, we'll find out shortly on that. If I understood you also, you're asking if they, were you only speaking if they were in compliance with the license or with respect to the, well, the license in terms of what they're allowed to sell? Were they selling other things other than what's permitted by the license? Was that one of your questions also?
Well, we already know that they weren't because there was a bust that happened.
Okay.
And...
That's why I asked Luke.
And because of this, different departments doing different things, and in the ordinance, it has enforcement mechanisms in there for fines and for revocation, so trying to gather and gather for the public too, an understanding of how does that actually take place and has it been taking place before we start to talk about invoking another ordinance out there to, or even managing the one we have correctly?
I believe for the most part we are, but we do need to double-check. You are correct.
So the, so for instance, and maybe Captain Powell can comment on this, with that bust that happened, would that not then engage a revocation or suspension or anything else if somebody's licensed to sell tobacco products under this licensing?
Yes, you are correct. So with the cases you're talking about specifically, we did locate items that were not legal to sell. We seized all of those products, we submitted the cases to the district attorney's office for prosecution. They declined to prosecute on this particular case. So then, yes, so we are currently working with the district attorney's office to do follow-up cases and ensure that we do get prosecution on any future case.
But that's prosecution, that's different from us...
From licensing and permits.
Engaging in basically saying, hey, you did something that's against your licensing, we now want to rip away your license, so who's responsible for that part in the city?
I do not know that.
No, we know. That is finance because they issue the license, but there is a process that I'm not familiar with because I'm new relative to what steps you have to take. I believe that's in the license, correct, Arjo?
Yeah, we have an administrative policy for revocation of business licenses.
That's correct. The existing code does allow us to do so. If a department were to conduct enforcement and as a result, the recommendation is to revoke the permit, finance department would work with our legal to draft that notice and issue that.
And then you have, and then there'll be a hearing in front of the finance director or his or her designee, which then can be appealed to council, and that's, and that's through our administrative hearing policy, not our admin sites, but our administrative hearing that's built into our business license chapter, I think it's three or whatever.
The tobacco, within the same chapter, tobacco retailer permits has its own application and own process outlined for hearings and all that, such things, yes.
So we can retroactively go and still do this, right?
Absolutely, I think.
Okay, so this is all going to be talked about, obviously, after this meeting, and we kind of raise something to your attention and whatnot, but it speaks to why I'm very leery of doing anything new at this point, and as well as some of the concerns that are on here that I see are around blight and other things like that, those are concerns, but those are concerns for lots of businesses. Those are concerns for alcohol-selling businesses, alcohol-selling businesses sell sweet drinks to kids, you know, looking at kids, they could sell to kids. We have all the same concerns, so I just think we need to be very careful how much more new stuff we put in place when we can't actually work with the stuff we have.
Thank you. Let me go to councilmember Hilton.
I'm supportive of this ordinance, I just want to put that on the table, but that's breaking news to me that we have the ability to be able to revoke someone's license and that was never brought to this council. That, to me, that is, that hurts. That hurts this community, that hurts this community that showed up, that hurts my office that worked hard behind the scenes with our advocates that are paying attention tonight to this meeting right now, that we had the chance to revoke four of those smoke shops, and nobody seems to go, well, I didn't bring it up, did you bring it up? Did you bring it? That bothers me, so I'll stop with that, and I'll just say whatever happened in the past, happened in the past. Before we finish this conversation, because I know, Mayor, you want to get back to dealing with this, I would like to get some clarification from staff as to what that process is to bring up the revocation of those four smoke shops, whether it's a fair memo from us or whether you feel the pressure tonight from a few council members to understand that you need to bring this up, and that should have been brought to our attention.
Well, just for the record, I thank the council for bringing this to my attention. I feel no pressure, I feel the need to bring the information back in one manner or another, but we will research it and let you know.
And I think we need to compare the revocation under the business license section from the specific tobacco retailer permit revocations. There's two avenues.
Yeah, and I do want to say, sorry to blabber it, Mayor, I do want to say that I have run into this in other communities when you have a land use section, and you have a license section, and you have a law enforcement section, and each are responsible for implementing a different portion. So councilmember Fugazi and I have had a couple conversations in this regard on some other matters, so we will take a look at that.
Councilmember Ramirez.
So I have a different approach than councilmember Fugazi. I feel that, I'm grateful that the staff is now going to move forward in looking at how to revocate these business licenses, but I think that in the interim, given these circumstances, that there seems to be some confusion, you know, the right hand not knowing what the left hand is doing, and getting that resolved, I would advocate for an emergency, what is the word, in the...
Urgency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance citywide, not just downtown.
Okay, further comments? Questions for staff?
I have a comment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, yes, I am definitely in support of this interim downtown ordinance, this emergency ordinance. I think I feel like councilmember Hilton. I am shocked that we could revoke those licenses and we never did it. I know councilmember Fugazi says, well, we should have read the ordinance, but we can't read everything. We don't know what's out there, and we're busy. We should be told these things. If you know it's happening, it should come before the council to say, do you want to do this? Because how much harm has been done? And if they've done it once, are they doing it right now? And then to hear that they weren't, one was not even prosecuted, that's just, that's unforgivable. I think to protect our youth, we just can't have them. And I mean, I agree with you, citywide is what I would prefer to, but if it's not, if we can't do that tonight, I think it's more important to get something going on this emergency ordinance, to get it started, and then let staff come up with a new ordinance, and I don't care how many ordinances we have, it doesn't matter, we are looking at safety here and health. We can always turn it into a citywide, I think, once they start the investigation.
I think one of the options is to do it citywide.
Right, that was one of the options, so.
But there are challenges that come with citywide, maybe we can talk about that after public comment.
Ashley Castillo, followed by Saul Gonzalez, Gary Walton, and then Ron Kirkish. Hello, my name is Ashley, and tonight I'm here, tonight I'm here to ask that we please don't let any more smoke shops open up in Gilroy. I understand that these smoke shops do bring a lot of more business and a lot more tax money, but I'm really concerned because they don't really just attract adults, they also catch the attention of younger people like me. There are already a few smoke shops in town, and one of the most popular ones that I've seen right now is near a middle school and near preschool, and I don't think that's right for kids to be exposed to something like this. When I was, when I did community service for a middle school, a girl was overdosed, which thankfully, she's well and she's alive, but the result of this is that she got it from her boyfriend, which he got it from an adult that sold him substance from a smoke shop. One possible solution could be if a smoke shop is opened up, they should be mandated to post reminders and signs on, inside their shops about risks about smoking, and a clear reminder that customers to not smell or like give like vapes to any minors, and there should be some sort of consequence if smoke shops advertise smoking and make it like visible for kids to see. Thank you for your time and listening. I really hope you consider using your position to help make Gilroy a more family and youth-friendly place.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Saul Gonzalez, and I am the director of Youth Health Services here at Gara's. We, I'm here to obviously speak in favor of this ordinance. We definitely need to at least get the process started while we investigate and we, you know, put our ducks in row, for sure. When it comes down to, the real issue here is that these smoke shops are selling illegal, illicit synthetic marijuana, Delta eight products. And so what's happening is that these products are being purchased without any, one cannabis tax, one, and two, they're being purchased because there is no specific quality control for these. So some of these products would be three hundred, two hundred percent THC, which is a direct derivative from the hemp plant, which is differently regulated from marijuana, right? So the regulations in the government state that marijuana is only supposed to be the flower and the leaf, and that leaves room for all these synthetic illegal products to get to the market and hit our kids. And so a bag of literal hot cheetos, or a bag of trolls, or a bag of, what is it, Flintstone cereal pebbles, could be laced, could be with high component, THC components, which can, again, we're going on a different, back in the eighties, nineties, we didn't have to worry about overdoseage when it came down to cannabis because THC levels were super slow, or super low, excuse me. Now that the plant has been modified and has been, strands have been regulated or increased, the potency has also increased, so that is the biggest issue here. So I definitely agree with you, Mrs. Kelly Ramirez, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that this needs to be a citywide ordinance, and I'm here to let you know that we are all for it. We need to protect our youth. Right across from the youth center, we have a gas station that converted into a smoke shop, which is around Brownell School, and so we need to keep these away from our schools, away from our youth. I'm not telling them, I'm not saying stop the products or the permits, but consider keeping those away from youth-populated areas in our community. Thank you.
Gary, please.
So I encourage you to adopt this emergency ordinance tonight. I think it's important for a number of reasons. You know, when I looked this up and realized that we have potentially nine smoke shops, not including what's in liquor stores and everything else, I think one of the things that was left out of the staff report, it's not just tobacco, it's drug paraphernalia. And who are they marketing that to? You know, I think if we care about our kids, I mean, you know, we have to, nine smoke shops, that's a lot. Either we have to admit we have a huge drug problem, or we need to admit that we don't need nine smoke shops, one or the other. And so Modesto just passed, and that was mentioned in the staff report, they just passed an ordinance this September, and there's a mandatory permit that all smoke shops, existing and new, must obtain a specific smoke shop permit issued by the police department. There's a permit fee, there's a cap on new shops, one per twenty-five thousand. Why don't we do the same thing? There's location restrictions. I was the chair of the specific plan downtown from two thousand two to two thousand twenty-five. If smoke shops were a thing back then, vaping wasn't, we would have said no, because if you look at what we prohibited, and what we wanted, we wanted restaurants, entertainment, and other things that brought families downtown. What we didn't want, the things that we did prohibit, was massage parlors, pawn shops, and the third one, anyway, it was...
Payday lending?
Huh?
Payday lending?
Payday lending, I think, was one, but there was another one. But I think we need to make a decision, particularly downtown, what kind of downtown we want. If we want those kind of uses, then it's not going to be family-oriented. And so regardless of what happens citywide, I'd recommend that they are not allowed downtown at all, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Mayor, council, and, well, mushrooms. Mushrooms are illegal. Aren't there criminal penalties that go along with somebody caught selling, but yet Rosen doesn't want to prosecute? I'm going to tell you right now, DA Rosen is the most dangerous person in the county of Santa Clara. Every month since nineteen twenty-one, a minimum of, people have died of drug overdose. That's a minimum, and the reason why is because he's not prosecuting drug crimes. He refuses to do it, and in this case, he's doing it again, right, Luke? We've got to do something about this guy, okay? I would hope that the mayor, city manager, our police department, and our council would get together, compose a letter to Mr. Rosen, and tell him to stop being delinquent, derelict, get on the ball, do his job, because our kids' lives depend on it, and he's not doing it. I really, really hope that you will strongly consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Okay, before council comment, I'm just going to go to Jolie really quick on some comments.
Yes, if we go citywide, we'll need to bring this ordinance back and make sure that it's consistent if we go citywide and we don't have any glitches with it. I did meet and confer with Sharon, and I was wondering if we needed to take it back to planning commission, and we decided, no, this could be a change, and we could just reintroduce it at the next meeting, if you want citywide, if we get that direction, but it will have to come back.
So then what you're saying is then doing an immediate emergency ordinance for just the downtown is a good first step in, maybe in the future, going citywide? Is that what you're saying?
You could adopt this urgency ordinance for just downtown tonight, and it's effective immediately, we'll report back in forty-five days at a notice public hearing to extend it or not, but if you want to go citywide, we'll have to come back with a new urgency.
And we will lose our urgency on this downtown one immediately.
Right, okay. So that makes sense.
So at what point can we bring it citywide?
It seems to me that this would be a council-initiated item.
So I'll comment on that too, because remember, the action we took in August is to get into all the nitty-gritty, everything that people talked about tonight to update that ordinance. That's already in the process right now, so I would say that if you wanted to do the citywide thing or any of that other stuff, to work through the city administrator to add that layer on there.
Language.
Yeah, add that language on there, and all the language that's being captured tonight is going to be, if staff is listening to it, I know I'm listening to it, this is an agenda item that I had, that I've been working on for a long time, and we hear all those, and we'll be able to get into those, you know, those details, but this, at least this forty-five-day period, we'll put a good pause on that to allow us to do that deeper work, right, to get that done, but I expect that that's almost finished, but as you can see, there's all, new cities are coming up with new ways, and that was the reason why we decided to wait a little bit, we were going to bring that back earlier, but if we waited a little bit, we get to capture all this great work that other cities are doing, and the grant funding was not being canceled in December, it was, we left... canceled in December, it was be, it was, we left it up until like June, so we had time on that, on that end too.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I, go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion if, okay then.
Agree with that.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve this emergency or, I'm not wait, I'm not wording this correctly.
I'll help you, I'll help you out if you don't mind. So I have a, I have a motion by Councilmember Marks and a second by Councilmember Klein to waive further readings and adopt an urgency interim ordinance establishing a temporary prohibition on the issuance of approval of any new tobacco retailer permits within the downtown specific plan area within the city of Gilroy pursuant to Government Code Section six five eight five eight, and make findings as incorporated in the ordinance that adoption of this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare, particularly regarding the protection of minors within the downtown specific plan area. Real call, please.
Do we have a second?
Uh, Councilmember Klein.
Oh, thank you.
And you're going to read?
And I'm going to read the title.
Okay.
Um, "An Urgency Interim Ordinance of the City of Gilroy Prohibiting the Issuance of Tobacco Retailer Permits for a Period Not to Exceed Forty-Five Days Within the Gilroy Downtown Specific Plan Area." Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Boso?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight, "Introduction of New Business: Update on Downtown Plywood Storefront Ordinance and Downtown Vacancy Ordinance Proposal." Staff report, please.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and members of the community. Tonight's staff's providing an analysis and research of the proposals of the downtown plywood removal subcommittee and vacancy ordinance subcommittee. For background, in two thousand twenty-three, the city council established the downtown committee to focus on economically enhancing and revitalizing downtown Gilroy. From its inception, the committee identified plywood coverings on vacant storefronts and long-term vacant buildings as major visual and economic deterrents. Uh, these elements harm the downtown's image and economic activity. To address these challenges, the downtown committee formed two specialized subcommittees. One is the Plywood Removal Subcommittee, that's tasked with developing strategies and regulations to minimize or eliminate insanely plywood coverings on vacant storefronts. Uh, the other is the Vacancy Ordinance Subcommittee, that's focused on addressing prolonged vacancies in downtown buildings through new regulations and incentives to promote occupancy. So subsequently, these two items were added to our community development department's work plan. And in updates to city councils, staff noted that these items fell under the discretionary category, which are city initiatives for the public good that are typically council or community-driven, but not mandated or core services. Staff estimated June two thousand twenty-five as the completion time, having to balance all priorities, daily operations, and state mandate and core items against limited staffing resources. In spring two thousand twenty-five, during the budget and work plan development process, uh, we've experienced some staffing changes, and this was at the same time that Gilroy Connect, which is the CCL fixed platform, was being launched. So this requires staff to defer these items to this, um, fiscal year. And so in tonight's report, staff's going to analyze the downtown subcommittee's proposals and evaluate the potential to improve downtown and also sharing some benefits and challenges. The, um, city regulations pertaining to vacant commercial spaces downtown, they're containing City Code Chapter five D, but this ordinance expired back when the seismic safety ordinance expired in December two thousand twenty-six. Here are some of the key provisions, uh, proposed by the subcommittee. Enforcement actions. Co-enforcement will issue notices to property owners when a building has been vacant for ninety consecutive days. Permissible window coverings. Displays of art or other cultural, historical, or educational values will be permitted. All our artworks must be respectful and appropriate for all ages, ensuring that the decorations contribute positively to downtown environment. Prohibited window coverings. The use of drywall, plastic, plain paper, or other raw coverings will be prohibited. Plywood use. The use of bare plywood for up to ninety days is allowed. After this ninety-day period, the plywood must be covered with one of the permitted coverings. A five hundred dollar fine per month will be imposed for failure to decorate the plywood after ninety days. Temporary plywood frontage must be removed after one year. A fine of two hundred fifty dollars per month will be imposed for failure to remove temporary plywood frontage after the allowed time. Uh, for fine collection, fines may be assessed on property tax bill, that's what's being proposed by the, um, subcommittee, that will streamline the collection process and increase compliance rates. Uh, staff has evaluated this for, from a feasibility perspective, and here are some of the benefits that we see. Specific enforcement actions, uh, will provide co-enforcement with clear guidelines. Explicitly stating that a notice will be issued after ninety consecutive days, um, of vacancy will provide a defining actionable starting point. Improved aesthetic standards and visual cohesion. The proposed amendments introduce critical distinctions for permissible versus prohibited window coverings, and that's also going to help staff, uh, ensure higher minimum standards for visual quality. The direct regulation of plywood use, which the expired ordinance did not address, uh, this is going to allow, um, staff to have a, um, a direct ways to enforce this, and by allowing plywood for only up to ninety days, then requiring it to be covered, the city takes a major, um, tackles this major source of blight, um, directly. And the five hundred dollar per month fine creates a strong financial incentive for prompt compliance. Encouraging permanent solutions. The one-year limit on temporary plywood frontage is crucial for encouraging permanent solutions, and the two hundred fifty dollar per month fine for non-removal reinforces the push for long-term improvements. Effective fine collection, the method in which the city collects the fines will be carefully crafted, uh, in coordination with city attorney's office to conform with the current state law. And we do want to mention this AB six thirty-two, that was a bill that was proposed earlier this year, that would amend a government code section to allow a city to establish a procedure to collect administrative fines and penalties by a recorded lien upon, upon the parcel of land on which the violation occurred. AB six thirty-two was passed by the state senate and the state assembly, um, but it was vetoed by the governor the day before the deadline. Um, he expressed concerns about expanding local authority to place liens on private property, um, and he wanted to balance the due process rights of property owners with the local government's authority. So staff's recommendation, uh, is to reactivate the former ordinance and incorporate the proposed amendments into the former ordinance. Regarding the vacancy storefront, um, or vacancy ordinance subcommittee's proposal, um, the subcommittee identified a pressing need for a more comprehensive strategy to address vacant buildings throughout downtown. Uh, to inform their recommendations, the subcommittee looked at several, uh, other jurisdictions' ordinances, and these are kind of detailed in the, uh, staff report, but I'll mention just a few here. Fairfield operates a vibrant vacancy program that emphasizes transforming vacant commercial downtown, uh, storefronts through window dressings, art, and paintings. Their program requires registration of vacant properties within ten days of vacancy with a five hundred, five hundred dollar annual fee. Sacramento, California has a vacant buildings and structures, uh, chapter addressing properties vacant for more than forty-five days for commercial properties or ten days for residential properties. Uh, their ordinance focuses on securing properties from trespassers and removing, uh, blight. As of September two thousand twenty-five, vacant buildings and storefronts are not included in the mandatory registration ordinance, and they're addressed on a complaint basis. However, we know Sacramento's exploring a vacancy tax to encourage development of about three thousand six hundred vacant parcels. Uh, Palm Springs requires vacant commercial properties defined as thirty-five percent or more on, unoccupied to be registered within ten days. San Francisco has implemented a commercial vacancy tax, which applies to spaces vacant for more than one hundred eighty-two days. The tax rates escalate based on frontage and duration of vacancy, starting at two hundred fifty dollars per linio for, of frontage for the first year. Um, San Francisco has also imposed a, tried to impose a, um, residential vacancy tax, but litigation was filed by property owners. The San Francisco, um, Superior Court held that the vacancy tax, the residential vacancy tax violated the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution by compelling property owners to rent their properties against their will. And this decision is still currently under appeal. And Oakland, California is another example. Uh, their measure W, the vacant property tax imposes an annual tax of three thousand to six thousand dollars on properties in use less than fifty days in a calendar year. Their tax varies by property type, um, six thousand dollars for residential or non-residential parcels, and three thousand for condominium units or vacant ground floor commercial parcels. And Berkeley is another one we found that's kind of similar to San Francisco that imposes a, uh, empty, residential, um, vacancy tax, that are vacant for more than one hundred eighty-two days per year. And here are some key provisions proposed by the subcommittee. Mandatory registration. Building owners must register their vacant properties within ten days of vacancy. City inspections. Upon registration, the city will inspect the building to assess co-compliance. Enforced renovations. Owners must complete necessary renovations to meet co-re requirements before reoccupancy. Failure to register, a hundred fifty dollar per week fine will be assessed for buildings not registered after the tenth day of vacancy. Annual monitoring fee of fifteen hundred dollars is required upon registration. Vacancy tax of an annual six thousand dollars will be an assessment on the property tax for buildings that remain vacant for longer than sixty days. The subcommittee also proposed a building report card where contact information for the owner, uh, and the vacancy date will be posted in the window, along with any co-compliance items. The subcommittee also proposed some potential exemptions, uh, for example, exempting buildings from the vacancy ordinance if delays are due to pending power restoration from PJNE or if there's active construction going on or an active lease or sale. Uh, staff has also evaluated this for some benefits versus challenges. Here are some of the benefits. Financial penalties incentivize property owners to avoid prolonged vacancies. Mandatory inspections and required renovations ensure vacant properties meet safety and building codes, reducing risks for the public and emergency services. The building report card publicly displays owner information and code status, fostering community awareness and encouraging prompt issue rest, uh, resolution. Compelling owners to reactivate vacant spaces can stimulate economic activity, increase foot traffic, and support local businesses. Inclusion of exemptions for legitimate circumstances such as, um, active marketing, ongoing construction, personal hardships, demonstrate reasonable approach targeting neglect rather than avoid, uh, avoidable delays, unavoidable delays. And we've also identified some challenges. The combined fifteen hundred dollar annual monitoring fee and the potential future six thousand dollar annual vacancy tax for prolonged vacancies represents a significant financial, uh, commitment. Risk of unintended outcomes. High penalties might, in some extreme cases, lead to property abandonment or distressed sales rather than the desired investment improvement, potentially exacerbating existing problem if it's not carefully managed. The proposal also increased the mission of demands. Implementing and overseeing a citywide comprehensive ordinance will require notable administrative resources for registration, inspections, fee collection, and managing the various exemptions. This could necessitate additional, um, and dedicated staffing. And there's also some potential for legal challenges. Uh, we just mentioned that San Francisco case earlier. And also I want to mention this bill, uh, SB seven eighty-nine that was proposed earlier this year. This bill would require a commercial real property owner to register with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration and annually file an information return to report specified vacancy information. Um, and this property will be subject to late and unfilled, um, sorry, uh, subject, late and unfilled returns to a penalty of a hundred dollars per commercial property. Uh, but this bill, SB seven eighty-nine, was held in committee, and it may become a two-year bill, so staff will continue to, continue to monitor this in the next several months. Scope of, oh, sorry, just, um, back to the legal challenges. So all these kind of uncertainties, um, suggest that the city should wait until the legal landscape, legal, legal considerations are just more fully, uh, developed. A scope of exemptions, uh, despite the provided exemption, some property owners may argue that the criteria or durations are too restrictive or too complex or, uh, prolonged, uh, for prolonged situations. Maintaining positive community relations, uh, if not clearly communicated and implemented with a supportive approach, the ordinance could be perceived as punitive rather than a tool for community improvement and potentially straining relationships with certain segments of the property owner community. So here's a map of, um, our team's survey of the core downtown area. Our co-enforcement team surveyed the downtown actually in the winter time, and then we updated that in the spring, and just most recently, we updated data again. And this just gives you a snapshot, kind of an idea of the magnitude of the vacancy issues, and this is just the core downtown area, and council could define the boundary for the ordinance. Uh, but just kind of in the downtown core area, we've identified about twenty-three vacant properties and three with plywood storefronts. As mentioned earlier, uh, implementing and effectively managing a new, um, vacant building registration program along with ongoing monitoring, inspections, and the enforcement of boarded-up storefronts will require dedicated staffing resources to ensure the program's success. As the community development department co-enforcement function has been expanding the range and scope of its programs, roles, and responsibilities, staff will return to council with an overall evaluation of co-enforcement staffing resource needs during a budget update. So here's a summary and the next steps. Based on the goals and proposals of the downtown committee and the city council, staff's providing analysis and research tonight. And staff analysis shows that the merits of pursuing an update and expansion, uh, of the former ordinance as an effective way to significantly enhance downtown's economic vitality. Um, however, staff does not recommend a vacancy tax at this time because of the San Francisco case we just mentioned, and also the SB seven eighty-nine that we just talked about. And this approach addresses the vacant properties, um, while mitigating, mitigating legal risks. As for next steps, um, staff will, staff will proceed with the implementation of any council direction received. If council directions for staff to update, strengthen, and revive the expired ordinance without a vacancy tax, staff will explore the level and structure of registration and monitoring fees, conduct community engagement to gather stakeholder input, and develop ordinance amendments. As the co-enforcement team is still in the process of completing the recruitment of another vacant position and also training, uh, new team members, staff estimates bringing the ordinance to council in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six. Once adopted, uh, the new ordinance will require ongoing staff resources to ensure effective implementation and management. As I mentioned, staff will, uh, return to council with an overall evaluation of co-enforcement staffing resource needs during the budget update. So here's staff recommendations for council to receive the update from staff tonight and direct staff to update, strengthen, and revive the expired Gilroy City Code Chapter five D, uh, without a vacancy tax at this time. And I want to take this opportunity to thank our supervising co-enforcement officer Tony and our building official, Hippo Lito, for all of their research on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Questions, questions, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, open the floor to questions. Uh, I'll go to Councilmember Marks first, and then Councilmember Ramirez.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to talk about this from the downtown committee's point of view. I was the chair, and when we divided up into groups, I was the person in charge of the subcommittee that did plywood removal. We had s- six buildings that were boarded up with plywood, and it was for numerous years, five-plus years. five-plus years. And there was no movement whatsoever to get it removed, to get any of it removed. And some of the building and business owners felt if we were going to make a dent into this vacancy ordinance, we had to improve the look of downtown. And so when we got this plywood removal ordinance, proposed ordinance, on the books and the owners began hearing about it, all of a sudden, 7411 and 7415 had their plywood down, they finished their storefronts. 7455, which was the Gilroy Dispatch, was the longest one who had their plywood up, but it came down eventually. 7533 was the old Mifaldas Building, and 7539 also was that Mifaldas Building, it was split into two. The front began to be done, doors were put in, and that building became very, it was, it's a beautiful building as of right now. On the opposite side of the street, across from Neon Exchange, 7320, had their plywood up for years. It wasn't helping anything, and I don't know if they were concerned about being charged a tax that made them all get in and start working to improve the appearance of downtown, but it worked. When we had the URM's and the people were fined, they just waited for the council, a new council to come in, and they had all their fines forgiven. And nothing really was moved with those empty buildings. That's why we are proposing so hard for a tax on the property tax bill to say, hey, folks, this council has said, and even the last one in 2022, which got this project going, said economic development was our top priority. But you can't have top priority if you have a downtown that looks like we have it. If you looked up and down the street, you do not see a vibrant downtown with people walking everywhere because we have too many empty buildings. In fact, I'm really impressed right now because you came up with a lot more empty buildings than what I did, and I'm like, oh, my God. You know, I have to, I really, Brad, I really have to thank you because we talked about constantly getting this back. Plywood removal and the vacancy building ordinance was completed in January of '24. And look where we are, November of '25, that we finally got it on. The previous administration would not put it on. There were no subsequent updates, like the staff report said. Any update that came through, it was a battle to get it on. It was supposed to be reported to us in June of 2025, and tonight, we're doing it in November. I don't believe there's any, no financial burdens to the property owners. They bought the buildings, they wanted to redo the storefronts. There's no reason why they stayed vacant and with plywood for so long. To give you some ideas of what I'm talking about, the Mifaldas Building, Jose Montes, 15 years it has been vacant. Patel's Building, 19 years it's been vacant. Hall's Building, 18 years. Sammy Wu's Building, 16 years. We're not talking two to three years to penalize these people. We are talking years and years and years, and there's always excuses why they can't get it done. Well, the excuses have to stop if we're going to get economic development in this downtown. Additional staffing. I think once building owners begin to see that the city of Gilroy is really serious about what they want to do, Tony, you're going to be sitting at your desk doing nothing because they're all going to come on board and say, hey, this city has gotten really serious about this. They don't want their city with plywood. They don't want the buildings to be left unoccupied. Now, we know, our, my subcommittee knew that maybe there were going to be some problems with getting a storefront put in within 90 days. We would go ahead and give, you know, permission for them to go a little bit longer, or maybe it was going to take a year. That's when you put up a mural after six months to make that plywood look really good. Dave Leal was on my subcommittee. He modeled it with his bowling alley. If you remember, he hired a muralist within the first 30 days to paint a mural. Dave Leal took his bowling alley down to studs and had that bowling alley functioning in a year and a half, not 18 years and still studs in the building. Things are going to have to change. So I do want to see a penalty on the property tax bill. Do I want to punish a person who might have had a building and no one wants to come and lease it? No, I do not want to punish that person because that person is actively looking, and maybe there's been a turn in the economy. I want to make the people that sit there with these buildings and say, hey, not my problem. Oh, well, I actually had a building owner, in fact, Gary, with your permission, I'm not even asking your permission, I'm going to tell him what we're doing. He came up with a project, and he and I are working on it, and we're making some success. We are going to every vacant building owner, and we are talking to him or her, and we're basically saying, you get this building going or you sell it because we're tired of the empty building. And it's starting to work, we're getting some movement. We are on to them for their dirty storefronts because some of the buildings that are vacant, they're filthy. There are cobwebs, the windows are all stained with tape, they're dirty. We're saying, clean your building. This is your property, you're in downtown Gilroy. Enough is enough. Dion is the, was the chair of the vacant building ordinance. I told him, I'd let him talk right after me. So go ahead, and then the rest of the council.
Okay, well, Councilmember Ramirez is next, she already chimed in, so then I'll go to Bracco.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll, you know, if he had, maybe he, you know, Carol actually answered one of my questions in her commentary, so I'm willing to wait until after.
Okay, because you might have more once you hear from Dion about.
You want to pass to Councilmember Bracco?
As long as you come back to me.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Well, I was hoping Andy would be here. I was really surprised to find out that where this was at because our last city administrator sat right there and told us, it's at the attorney's office. They're reviewing it. And that was untrue, and our attorney didn't say a word about it. So that bothers me. But when we took this on, there was three of us, and we took, we took a couple cities each, and we had Zoom calls with them. I talked to, mine was Oakland. I talked to the city attorney and the public works director, and they had nothing but praise for the way their program's going. It's citywide, and that's what we were proposing, citywide, because an abandoned building on Monterey Street's the same thing as an abandoned building on First Street. So to have it citywide, and it would make it more feasible, and theirs supports itself and a lot more. But to see that they want to go back to the ordinance the way it was before, it didn't work. Nobody paid their fines, they just let them ride, and then they would come to the council, oh, I got it sold if you forgive these fines. And every council always forgave the fines. So it was a joke. You know, so if we're gonna be serious about this, I think we should move forward and put it on the ballot. The San Francisco thing, it's not even apples to apples. It's residential properties, this is something else, you know, and we, I don't think we really want to listen to San Francisco. I'd go more with the Oakland, Sacramento, Fairfield, they're not having any problems. So I think we should move forward with it. If not, I wouldn't want to see us start with the old ordinance again, just let it go the way it is and call it quits, man.
Councilmember Ramirez.
So one, a couple of the questions have been answered. I wanted to know how long most of the buildings had been vacant, and I heard 15 years, 19 years, 18 years, so we're talking decades, not months.
Correct.
And one of the things I wanted to clarify with Sharon, you spoke to Dion in terms of the San Francisco case, court cases, residential, not commercial, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's in accordance with, you know, city attorney's office that recommended that the city doesn't enact a vacancy ordinance at this time.
Okay. And then the other thing is, why are the buildings, Carol, you talked about, you know, well, they always have all these, I mean, what are a couple of the excuses or reasons or whatever that these buildings have?
Well, it's really very interesting. Sharon and I were laughing just earlier this evening. PG&E seems to be the biggest excuse, and then on one of the buildings, we found out that this particular man who's been looking for, oh, not, what's the word? It's, oh, I can't think, it's for his power. He got permission in August of 2024 that he could start the trenching, and he never has since.
Okay.
So, you know, so there's excuses, they're all excuses, you know.
PG&E is not holding up things for 15, 19, 18?
No, they are not.
They're slow.
They're not that slow.
Okay.
So.
So, and then Dion, you know, you've been here for a while, and there have been situations where we've tried to get things going downtown, and there's been more of a carrot type of thing with incentives. Have they worked? Have they not worked? You know, would it be worth looking at more of an incentive rather than, you know, the penalties?
I don't think so. I mean, we've tried everything that you could think of, and with really poor results.
Okay.
Are you talking about URM suspensions?
I was talking about the URM's and then, you know, incentives that were given for a while for buildings to be built, a number of buildings were built.
We waived, no, we didn't waive fees, but we set the impact fees to zero, not waive them. We did, we tried doing penalties, we tried doing administrative citations, then we switched to the carrot, not the stick, and I can't remember how many times, because I worked on those ordinances.
Okay.
And then we would always have a sunset clause, and then we'd have to amend the ordinance. So then, I think the final rounds of the ordinance, the URM ordinances, I said that the sunset clause could be set by resolution in the future because it was always a moving target. But, yeah, we did try, we tried the stick, we tried the carrot, and it is.
And one didn't prove more effective than the other. Okay. So I, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Bracco, you know, a number of these cities have opportunities I think that we can implement here. Sacramento was one that I liked, Oakland, you know, if you feel confident. But I, I think that nothing has changed because nothing has changed. And so if we don't do something, then we're, to expect things after 15, 18, 19 years, I don't think anything's going to change.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Fugati, then we'll try to get into public comment.
So I have a question for legal. With the situation in San Francisco, can you have any kind of a, of an opinion on if they were to rule that it was a constitutionality issue with them, it was on residential as opposed to commercial? That's question one. And the second question is, let's say that they do rule it as not constitutional, and they have to roll it back, and it does apply to commercial in these other cities, what would likely be the recourse in that? For instance, for people who had already had to pay fines and all these things, would the cities have to give them back?
Possibly. If it was illegally collected tax, they would try to look for refunds, or there might be someone trying to come in, and the big thing with fees and taxes now are these class actions. So everybody that paid, you know, would want some sort of refund. But, yeah, I don't think if it was declared unconstitutional, people would just say, oh, I don't want my money back.
So these other cities, I mean, they would have huge liabilities in if they've been doing this for some time.
They could, yes.
Okay. And as far as a comment on this, I did, I think I saw 60 days on there. Was that correct, Sharon?
Yes, from the proposal from the subcommittee?
Yeah, I will at least say from my point of view, that is way too short. It does not give time for anything, and I don't think it necessarily is indicative of somebody who is, who is derelict in trying to do whatever it is they're trying to do. When you get out to where you're nine months or a year or 18 months, well, then there's another clear situation that you're, you maybe are not making an attempt. The, I generally don't like taxes at all, but there is an impetus to be more active in trying to get your property either sold or rented if there is something like this. And I am in agreement with, with Councilmember Bracco as well, that I would not have it be just in downtown. I would say for commercial property, not industrial and other things like that as much, but in a commercial property where you have storefronts, where you need to have an active business or visual, like assemblance of a, of a business in the city, it makes a ton of sense. It's all good.
Okay, I'd like to answer one part of your question, if you remember.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, can we just go to public comments first?
Okay, yes. And then you have that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Walton?
Maria, Gary Walton's next, and then Maria.
So I'm going to preface my, my comments tonight and give all due respect to the committee and the council members that served on it, but I got a little, little different take on this. So when I listened to this tonight, the staff report, I went, wow. You know, this is what happens when we focus in on deficits, not possibilities. When I chaired the 2005 Downtown Specific Plan, it was an aspirational plan, a vision for what downtown Gilroy could become. We didn't achieve everything we hoped for, largely because we lacked an implementation budget, a clear timeline, and accountability. But where we did succeed, it was because the city partnered with the private sector and incentivized the kind of growth the plan envisioned. During those partnership years, private investors put more than $30 million into new mixed-use projects downtown. That's what happens when a vision meets collaboration. Then in 2006, the city adopted an extremely stringent URM ordinance, stricter than most cities. Instead of building on that spirit of collaboration, the approach started with blame and fear, accusing property owners of not caring about safety. The result, 15 years of pain, frustration, and slow progress. Only when the city and property owners began meeting, listening, and working together did we finally move forward. That experience taught me something vital. When we unite around problems, we divide ourselves. When we focus only on what's broken, we lose sight of what's possible. I speak from experience, I have over, I just counted this up, I have 96 tenants in my downtown buildings. Now, I don't own 96 buildings, but I have multiple tenants in buildings. I know firsthand what it takes not only to attract new tenants, but more importantly, how to choose them wisely and support them so they thrive. That's what builds momentum downtown: relationships, mentorships, and mutual success. Author Peter Bloch said, quote, "We cannot solve problems by focusing on them, we can only move forward through the achievement of something aspirational." That's our opportunity today to reframe our efforts, not around fixing anyone, but about creating a downtown that's vibrant, safe, and welcoming for everyone, residents, workers, visitors, and yes, the property owners who've invested their lives here. Our future depends on what we choose to create, not what we choose to avoid. When we choose possibility, we choose partnership. And when we choose partnership, we create progress that lasts. Let's move forward together, and not out of frustration, but out of faith in what Gilroy can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria.
Thank you. So for those business owners that are not going to sell, and there are many that don't want to rent them, one of my buddies right around the corner from me rented a building. He had to do all the costs to renovate it, thousands of dollars. So there are going to be builders, owners that are not going to rent them because they're fussy, or they just don't want to rent the building. Can we propose to them to maybe they buy the plywood, and maybe through the Arts Alliance, we can have some artists do some of the paintings on there? I mean, at least they would be something more cost- I mean, at least, they would be something more cosmetic than just empty. Just an idea. I don't know.
Thank you. Ron, please.
Thank you again. You know, many years ago now, Gary and I spoke about stuff. My wife was actually in the hospital, at O'Connor Hospital, and it was during Christmas season. And Santana Row was all decorated up for Christmas. It was beautiful. And I called Gary up. I said, "Gary, this is awesome." And he goes, "Ron, that's what we should have in Gilroy." I believe that's kind of what you said, Gary. And it still sticks in my mind. What if we had a Santana Row downtown? If you go to Santana Row, it's always busy. People live on the top, and then, they do their business at the row. They go to restaurants there, and stuff like that. Can we reconfigure what we have downtown and make it into something like Santana Row that is pleasurable and attractive, and people will like to go down there? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Okay, now, we'll go back to Councilmember Marks.
Okay, well, I'm going to address Maria. In our proposed ordinance reply with removal, we found that the existing ordinance that the city of Gilroy has said that all vacant buildings had to have something in their windows, pictures, murals, whatever. So, if nothing less, it'd be really nice to go back and enforce that part of it. Councilmember Fugazi, if you, you might have missed, but when we were giving our little summaries, we would never penalize a building owner who was working steady on his or her building, or actively looking for potential businesses to come in. What we have encountered, and what the committee encountered, were people that just said, "No." And one of our speakers is absolutely correct. Some of the building owners have told potential people who wanted to lease the building that they would not do any of the improvements. It had to be the leasee, so to speak. And not too many people are going to put that kind of money into someone else's building. There's a lot of issues downtown that we need to break through. That's it. I'm done.
Do you have some comments? Brad?
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember, thank you very much for the thank you, but it wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for Sharon and her staff putting it together and working very hard with all the projects they have. Couple of points, I'm going to turn it back over to Sharon. There's a lot of details that still have to be worked out. And I think what I asked Sharon to put this up, because for tonight, we just, not we just, we want to know if you want to go forward. Because if you look at here, mandatory registration, the point is, do you want mandatory registration? We can work out the number of days in vacancy later. You know, we can have that discussion. So, I would recommend that when they draft the ordinance, they come back, if you direct them to go do it, come back in a study session, and you can really roll up your sleeves and start talking about what do you think is reasonable in terms of the number of days. Notwithstanding, part of the reason for the detail in the presentation was the fact that the staff wanted to do justice to the amount of work that the committees had put into this, to really show the different issues they came up with. So, I think there was still time, when the draft ordinance comes back, to have a more detailed, in-depth discussion regarding just what the fees are, if they are, or whatever, notwithstanding the vacancy tax. The vacancy tax is a critical issue that we do need to give direction on tonight, if you want to have staff working on that. But before I do that, I'll ask Sharon to go back to her steps on this that I was starting to reference. So, go ahead, Sharon.
Yes, thank you, Brad. So, if council's direction for staff tonight, let me just jump to the, is to receive this update from staff and direct staff to revive the expired ordinance, update it and strengthen it without vacancy tax, you know, then, the bullet points without the blue colors, those are all of our next steps. We'll be exploring the level and structure of the fees, and we'll be engaging with the community for stakeholder input, as Gary mentioned, and then, we'll be developing the new ordinance and then bring that to council. And that's where all those details you saw, you know, the proposals from the subcommittee, I'm going backward now. You know, these are the key provisions from the vacancy ordinance subcommittee, and then, going backward, this is the plywood removal subcommittee proposals. All of these details will be discussed with council.
Councilmember Fugazi, and then Bracco.
Yeah, in addition to that, Sharon, if it's possible, when you come back, to understand the staff overhead with other, you know, each of these options. You know, I understand Councilmember Marks' comments regarding, well, if, you know, if people are actively doing this, and everything, there's a morass of details in all of this in order to not only ascertain those things, but to regulate and to, how do you objectify all of these different things? And so, to understand, you know, what the overhead or cost is to these, I think puts a perspective on it, because everybody can make a wish list of everything they want, but there's the other side of that. And we know that already with, as you mentioned prior, with the code compliance, and we, you know, we have a temporary code compliance, and we have to come back to that for just the things that we all, you know, that we have, that we've put in place, and we add more. So, knowing that would be really helpful, I think, as you come back.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I think we need to keep in mind that if we're going to go the route of putting it on the tax bill, that's got to be on the 2026 election. So, we need to move on that. And this thing about San Francisco, you know, if you're going to worry about getting sued all the time, you're not going to drive anywhere, you're not going to walk across the street, because all of us can be sued at any time for anything, and we know that in the city. We've been sued over and over again. So, you know, I don't think that's something that we should hold this up just because of that. So, thank you.
Any comments on the left? I have a question. Can you go back to the other slide that you had up with other blue, I'm sorry, there?
Okay.
So, one of the challenges that, you know, I, one of the challenges that I have with all of these key provisions is none of them, they're all enforcement. I don't see very much, am I missing something, about partnership and working with the business owners? Now, what I've heard here tonight is, from some folks, is, "Oh, we've done that in the past, it doesn't work." Well, this is a new council, and this is a new day. And I'm not, I'm not ready to rely on the past on how we move forward. And so, what I'm struggling with is I don't see anything about partnership and incentives and things like that. So, if we move forward, can you go back now, Sharon, to council's recommendation? Yeah, can you talk, can you talk a little bit more about this? So, if we move forward, I, did you, hear you say something about stakeholders?
Mm-hmm.
That's the next step.
Yeah.
Yeah, this. So, if we did give you guidance to move forward, to come back with something else and something stronger, how much that includes, do you think, stakeholder input and partnerships?
We will be conducting stakeholder, you know, engagement events, for sure. You know, just to let them know, this is what staff is working on, you know, based on council direction, and just to hear their input. And depends on the outcome of that. Some items could be, you know, partnerships or more, something more collaborative versus this, you know, fines and penalty type of approach.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, remains to be seen, but I think, based on the past history here, or even just in the few years I've been here, there's been some things that have been pretty collaborative with the downtown property owners and business owners, and with council members, and just other community members as well.
Sure. Mayor? If this, if it's the wish of the council, kind of building on what you said, staff may have to monitor these community engagement efforts, and if at some point they start seeing other suggestions, other ideas, or stuff, before completing the ordinance, you may need to come back for an update or with the council to present some of those of what they're hearing. There might be the need to do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But so, but where, go ahead, Councilmember Ramirez.
So, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, moving at a speed that doesn't push this down the road for a couple more years, if it does come to the point where we decide we want to put it on the ballot. You know, is that realistic in terms of workload? You know, I mean, my understanding is we would have to, by spring, make a decision whether it's going to go on the ballot or not. So, is...
They talked about coming back in quarter one, I believe, with...
Yes, and that was assuming, you know, staff is, I mean, council is going to give the direction to proceed with developing the ordinance without the vacancy tax, because that's the recommendation of the city attorney's office. So, if you were to make, you know, decision tonight to go ahead and start working on the vacancy tax, we'll have to circle back with city attorney's office to see, you know, what additional research or work that may involve versus the ordinance.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, staff has not factored in the spring date with what the city attorney may or may not be able to work on. They haven't asked.
Well, so, based on that, for the rest of council, I'm going to need some guidance from the rest of council, because personally, I'm not interested in the $6,000 vacancy tax. So, anybody on council who really wants to push this, go ahead.
I would like to see, you know, I don't want us to, that, to me, is my last resort, right? But I don't want to miss the deadline of getting it on the, if we can't, you know, if the stakeholders come together, and if we cannot find something collaborative and something that we're all comfortable, that there is going to be a change in downtown, I want to be able to then get that on the ballot. I agree with you, Greg. I think, you know, let's try to do this, the new council and that, but then, if we look at past history, I don't want to disregard that, in that this has happened, these conversations have taken place. So, I'm trying to determine whether there can be some kind of a balance in that, trying first to bring everybody to the table and come up with something so we don't have to go the path of the tax. But if we can't get there, then let's not wait until '28 to get it. And I don't know whether that's feasible or not. That's, that's my question, is, is that feasible?
We don't know either, at this point.
Councilmember Bracco.
Well, why don't you just propose having a subcommittee, you and the mayor, you guys could meet with all these property owners and formulate your own opinion of how you want to move forward.
I don't think we need a subcommittee for that. We can go meet, we could build our relationships on our own. I personally, I'm not interested in being on a subcommittee like that.
No, but I would like to have an opportunity to have stakeholders together at the table at one time, type of thing, you know? But, but moving, you know, the question is, is it feasible that we can move quickly enough to do that, have those conversations to the point where we can ascertain whether that's the route we go? Or are we at a dead end? Are we, are we at a stalemate, and we need to move forward with the two?
I'm not going to make light of the tax, because this is all, that's all new to me. I've not been involved in that before. My personal feeling is, you want to get moving on the ordinance, tax or no tax. You want to start building the bones of this, get it up speed, get these things defined, start meeting with the community. I'm not saying ignore it, but if for some reason, things don't quite come together, and right now, we're relying on Sharon and everything else she's working on, and her staff, in terms of determining what she can do...
That's why I'm asking.
Well, and she's trying to feel along. What I'm hearing in Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, you're just not sure of whether or not the city attorney's office, and in all fairness, they have to sit down, look at their own workload, can meet that timeframe, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and since not doing a vacancy taxes, their recommendation, I think I'll have to defer to them on, you know, what, what they probably feel comfortable in, you know, creating for the city.
I see what you're saying. Okay. So, essentially, the advice of your city attorney is, "Don't go there." And I'm paraphrasing.
It's just advice.
It's advice. Don't go there. I'm sorry, if I may. Yeah, and so, they're giving you their legal advice. You can ask them to take another look at it, and that's your choice, you know, if you wish. Is that...
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yeah, I think, you know, an all-or-nothing kind of strategy is not a good strategy. I mean, there's a lot of good here that comes with what Sharon has recommended here, and a separate track to amend it at a later time is certainly another possibility, to add this other vacancy component, as we see more things that come out of the legal side, other cities, how they do it. And we can come back to that portion of it, and at the same time, be working with the community and working with businesses and whatnot, to see how we can still try to revive this. And at the same time, on top of that, we have an economic development department that we're trying to stick together, so why are we going to preclude exactly how that person in that department would want to put that thing together? So, I, you know, I think getting community development, moving forward on this as they recommend it, is a great first step, and we should then see what might be next, or what might be necessary next with the vacancy part, with the tax.
And if I may, Mayor, staff will follow up with the city attorney's office, and we'll have a discussion regarding the status of that, and how it can be potentially blended in. But I have to agree with Councilmember Fugazi, let's get this started, so at least you have something in the works.
And staff, and staff hears that we don't, if there's a chance, we really want to have this option of the vacancy tax, if need be. It sounds like the goal is that we don't need it. That's the goal. Right? So, everyone seems to agree, yeah, that's the goal, I think. So, okay, so, we need a thumbs up, basically, on the proposed, proposed direction by staff is to receive the update from staff and direct staff, pardon me?
With additional consideration of the vacancy.
Okay, let me read, okay, "To staff to update, strengthen, revive, and expire Gilroy City Code Chapter 5D vacant commercial space in the downtown historic and downtown expansion district without the vacancy tax at this time, but with additional consideration at some point, sometime soon, if need be." Thumbs up, anybody?
How does plywood removal, though, fit into this? Because that all, Sharon, this is just the vacant commercial space. What about plywood removal?
No, that's included. It's all together.
That's all in there. Oh, okay.
Looks like we have approval. Thank you very much. Thank you for the great discussion, everybody.
That's just the current title of this chapter. We'll create a new one. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to city, future council-initiated agenda items, none. City administrators' report?
No report.
City attorneys' report?
No report.
Okay, item number 12, moving into closed session.
Yes. And I need to read from the OGO, "Based on the advice of your legal counsel on a motion and vote in open session to assert the attorney-client privilege to confer with or to receive advice from its legal counsel regarding pending litigation when the discussion in open session concerning these matters would likely or unavoidably prejudice the position of the city in the litigation." And so, you need to vote on going into the closed session.